Good afternoon. I'd now like to bring the regular meeting of council to order. First item is adoption and receipt of agenda items, and I would.
Don't move Ferguson.
With J one has been withdrawn, so with that change, the move by Thompson Ferguson. And is there a second or?
Second.
Second, and call a question, all those in favor. Close, there we go. Okay, so that's done. And the next thing is adoption minutes of regular council meeting of October 5th and the special council meeting of October 19th. That motion, please. Council Whitmarsh in second, or? Counselor Kuntz, and any errors or missions? None. Call them question, all those in favor. Opposed, and that carries. Thank you. And now we move on to delegations. The three delegations, start with Ms. Andrea Actonson. Turn it over to Scott. So I'll just ask Ms. Bauer. In this middle, if the delegations are here, if not, we'll move on and come back to them. Okay, so we'll give the delegation, apparently aren't here yet, so we'll give us some time and move on to presentations. The agricultural viability strategy, and it's a presentation by Ms. Ava Reeve, our consultant. Ms. Ava Reeve.
Hello.
Welcome here.
Thank you for having me here, Mayor Froze and counselors. I'll jump right into the presentation and just share my screen. All right, can everyone see that okay?
Yes, it's fine. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so. As Mayor Froze introduced me, my name is Ava Reeve, and I am the program coordinator for the Langley Small Farm Network. I'm here to offer a presentation on the final report for the Langley Local Farm Organization Study, which was conducted over the past year and a half. You should have access to a copy of the report now. The Langley Small Farm Network is a project of Langley Environmental Partners Society, or LEPs, with which I know you are all familiar. The Langley Local Farm Organization Project was developed from a recommendation from the Agricultural Viability Strategy, Strategy 2.1.3, with the excerpt here, which had indicated that farmers in Langley need support to ensure their voice is heard as the township urbanizes. The solution proposed in the ABS was a farmers institute, which is a unique type of nonprofit organization that is officially recognized by the province for representing farmers. This slide shows the actions recommended by the ABS to implement this policy. In February 2019, the AAEAEC and subsequently council endorsed a proposal from LEPs to conduct this review through LEPs' Langley Small Farm Network Program. And this excerpt from the ABS was the foundation of the project design. The final results have been reviewed by Township of Langley Planning Staff and endorsed by the AAEAEC. And the final report is fairly comprehensive, but I'll take you through an overview of both the process and the findings today. As indicated on the previous slides, the intention of this study was to identify whether Langley needs an agricultural organization. And indeed, our work identified a definite need for organizational support of agriculture in Langley. In fact, during the course of this study, a new Langley Farmers Institute came together and was formally incorporated. Therefore, in writing the final report, rather than asking whether Langley needed an organization, we were able to focus more on how this organization and others existing in Langley might be able to fill the needs identified. Specifically, in the process of this study, we looked for two things. What are the gaps in supporting agriculture in Langley, including where existing resources are not being maximized? And also how existing and new agencies can fill those gaps, including by forming partnerships and coordinating their efforts. In practical terms, to conduct this study, we researched examples of agricultural organizations in B.C., not limited to farmers institutes. We conducted in-depth interviews with five key farmers institutes and two key alternative models. We summarized and analyzed the findings to date, presented to the AAEAEC, and then presented this information and posed further questions to a wider cross-section of Langley farmers at a community engagement event. That event was attended by about 50 farmers from Langley, ranging in commodity type and also scale of business. We then proceeded to review local agencies that are currently supporting the agricultural community in Langley. We identified gaps and opportunities in a support network. And we developed a focus group of key industry representatives to give specific input on the design of a new organization. This focus group actually proceeded to form a new Langley Farmers Institute that occurred over this past fall and winter. At that point, we were starting to write the final report, and the report was reviewed by township planning staff. And that was over the course of this past summer and presented to the AAEAEC in September. The key activity in this process was conducting a gap analysis. And we started by developing an understanding of the current roles of key local agencies that support farming in the township of Langley. And the relationships between these agencies form a network that consists of government bodies, institutions, community-based organizations. And we found each agency offers different resources to the farmers at the center of that network. We analyzed the dynamic system that is formed by these agencies, looking for gaps and opportunities to increase resilience. Resilience is a concept that describes the ability of a system to adapt, to change, or maintain its functionality in the face of stresses or disruptions. So resilience in a system like this relies on multiple participants, whether the different agencies in the community, or in other examples, it could be the different organisms in a biological environment. So in all examples, the participants in the system each play a part in supporting the resilience of the larger system. And their role is to shift and coordinate to fill gaps and meet new opportunities. So we applied this concept to Langley's agricultural system. And what we were looking for was a resilient farm sector, and this comes from the township's agricultural profile. This particular phrasing. And a resilient farm sector would be one that can adapt to challenges or disruptions, as I said. And some examples of these for the agricultural community in Langley could be climate change, urbanization, as the ABS identified. It could be price fluctuations or even legislative changes. And of course, over the past seven months, we experienced a disruption that I don't think any of us could have really anticipated in the form of COVID-19, a global pandemic that really did cause disruptions and challenged the resilience of of our agricultural community here. And COVID-19 really has brought attention to the need for resilience in our local food systems. So what specifically were we looking for in this study? The key characteristic for a system to be resilient is for its participants to be interconnected. But you were also looking for them to have slight overlap without complete competition, of course. So applying the concept of resilience to the network of local agencies supporting agriculture in the township of Langley, we were able to identify 11 specific gaps, and these can be found in their complete form in the report, but I'd like to run through them in brief. One, enhanced representation of and advocacy for Langley farmers to relevant government agencies. Two, enhanced representation of and advocacy for Langley farmers to other relevant agencies. Three, improved accessibility and shared understanding of the Township of Langley policy framework. Improved accessibility of knowledgeable staff to navigate these and act as a liaison. Four, connectivity between organizations serving agriculture in Langley, as well as between these and relevant Township of Langley departments and committees. Five, enhanced engagement with active farmers as part of public consultation efforts by Township of Langley council and staff. Six, cross-commodity collaboration between farmers, particularly on issues affecting agriculture in Langley generally. Seven, expanded programming and farmer engagement to support farming on small and medium-sized agricultural lots. Eight, expanded funding for projects and programs that promote sustainable agriculture in the Township of Langley. Management of these funds by a trusted neutral agency. Nine, enhanced community education on normal farm practices that residents can expect to encounter in Langley. Ten, expanded promotion of local purchasing of Langley agricultural products. Eleven, further implementation of the agricultural viability strategy, as well as other strategies and plans. So these 11 gaps set the targets that any organization that's aiming to support agriculture in Langley can can use to inform their programming. But this is also where our review of organizational models came in. So we reviewed between 10 and 15 examples of four different models of organizations that serve farmers and which might have a role in resolving some of the gaps that we identified. And we specifically chose four models that currently, or as of November last year, exist in the township of Langley. So that was nonprofit organizations, farmers institutes, private services, and agricultural advisory committees. We conducted interviews with seven specific examples of these, and in the report, we give an overview of the appropriate appropriateness of each of these models to meet the needs that were identified. We also found that there is a clear appetite in Langley for engagement in these organizations, which was a really positive thing to find. However, as the scope of this study was limited to the role of a new organization, our final recommendations are necessarily limited to those that pertained to the role of the new Langley Farmers Institute, and in particular, its relationship to the Township of Langley. So these are the final recommendations put forward by this study, addressed to the Township of Langley. The Township of Langley recognizes the Langley Farmers Institute is a part of the governance system and a body that represents Langley farmers. A, the township refers to the institute to disseminate information of relevance to farmers. B, the township will engage the institute as a means to consult with farmers where and when relevant and appropriate, and as determined by council. C, the township will appoint one director of the institute to serve on the Township Agricultural Advisory and Economic Enhancement Committee as determined and considered by council. And D, the township will afford the institute regular opportunities balanced with other committee priorities to provide updates on institute activities, events, and projects to the Township's Agricultural Advisory and Economic Enhancement Committee, as well as annually to council to maintain engagement and positive communications. As for the Langley Farmers Institute itself, we want to be clear that it cannot be expected to resolve all of the gaps identified in this study. It's simply not possible, especially for a new and entirely volunteer-run organization, and also one that is additionally challenged by the the fact of a pandemic in its foundational year, which is really a difficult thing for a new volunteer-run organization to to overcome. So with that in mind, these are the final recommendations put forward by this study to the Langley Farmers Institute. The Langley Farmers Institute performs due diligence to represent, advocate for, and serve Langley farmers. A, the institute will strive to provide a coordinated voice and represent and advocate for Langley farmers' interests. B, the institute will continue to pursue a cross-commodity membership aspiring for a broad representation of Langley's farmers. C, the institute will continue to offer voting memberships to current farmers only and engage non-farmers in other ways. And D, the institute will advocate for and assist where and as appropriate in the implementation of the Township of Langley's agricultural viability strategy, as well as the implementation of other agricultural studies, strategies, and policies. In strategic terms, the next steps to follow this study would be to integrate the new Langley Farmers Institute into the Langley community. And this process would benefit greatly from the endorsement of the study's recommendations by council today. And then into the future, of course, we hope council will support opportunities to resolve more of the gap identified by this study. Sorry about that. My final slide here offers contact information for LEPs and the Langley Farmers Institute. And that includes the presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Several members, members of council with questions. Counsel Ferguson.
Okay, you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you, Ava, for your report today. This is very exciting. I've spent a lot of years with agricultural folks, with my nine years on the board of directors at the Alder Co-op, and used to be the Alder Farmers Institute, I think way back. And I always went to farmer people for support. I wanted to ask you if you've had the opportunity to meet with or discuss some your study with the Langley Sustainable Agricultural Foundation, LSAF, because they, through their information, they want to get together with farmers, academics, government officials, and other passionate individuals to strengthen food and farming in township and surrounding municipality. That's my question, if I may.
Yes, absolutely. I'm actually the vice president of LSAF. And I made sure that there was lots of communication back and forth through this process. LSAF had been one of the organizations to endorse LEPs and the Langley Small Farm Network, conducting this review. And they they anticipate some great symbiosis between the two organizations, the Farmers Institute and LSAF, especially as they have complementary, but but different mandates and membership bases as well.
Thank you very much. Good to hear that.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation to us today, Ms. Reeve. I had a couple of questions that came up for me. When you made the recommendations and around the Langley Farmers Institute, one of the ones areas that I was thinking of was incorporating or trying to enhance farming for the for youth and to try and get more youth engaged in farming. I'm wondering if that, I didn't see that specifically mentioned as a recommendation, but I'm wondering if the idea of youth was discussed, and I don't even know how we define youth necessarily, but young farmers or in youth that would be engaged in farming, and what was there discussions around that in terms of how we move forward and incorporate that? Is that something that the Farmers Institute would be engaged in those kinds of discussions?
Absolutely. It wasn't a specific area of study for this particular project because we were looking at existing farmers and their relationships and needs in Langley. But when we did the community engagement event last year, that was a topic that came up that the farmers of Langley would love to support that. And and the Farmers Institute that emerged out of that agreed that they they would like to be involved in supporting and promoting agriculture as a career and and even just appreciation for and understanding of agriculture in Langley.
Right, okay, that's awesome. Thank you. The other question was, and maybe it was also not something that was necessarily part of this study, but we, I know that part of our discussion earlier on, and when we were thinking about having a study done like this, we were talking about the use of the ALR land and how a significant portion of ALR land in Langley is currently not used for agriculture or farming, and you know, the need to try and develop, whether it's policies or changes of some kind that would help to encourage more agriculture to be done in the ALR. Was that something that was also discussed? And do you see that the Farmers Institute would would also play a role in providing recommendations around that topic?
Certainly. It, again, it wasn't within the scope of this project. But I know the the ABS does have specific recommendations about promoting agricultural use of agricultural land in Langley. And the Farmers Institute would be a great avenue for for reaching people and maybe showcasing some of the ways that that ALR land in Langley is currently being used and to promote that to more residents.
Right, okay. And last question, you said the Langley Farmers Institute has been established already, so is that, is there is there, what is the structure of that? Like, is there people that have been named to sort of lead that process? Is there like a director of the institute? How is that sort of structured? And how would we get that, you know, information or connection to council?
Yes, so it's structured more or less like a nonprofit with a board of directors and an executive committee and a wider membership. Farmers Institutes are actually incorporated under a different act than societies, but they function 99% the same. And so the contact information screen here is where you can reach the Farmers Institute. And you should be able to get your hands on a list of the current directors. One of the current directors is a member of the Township's AAEAEC, and that's John Caldella. So that's, that's one name I can give you there offhand.
Awesome. That's that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel.
Thanks for your presentation and how relevant this is for the for the township, the ongoing work that we need to do to keep our agriculture alive. I just wanted you to reach out, perhaps. I noticed in your in your gap analysis that items nine and 10 talk about public, you know, education and reaching out and engaging your average resident. Could you reach out to the Aldergrove Agricultural Association? It's been around for over 100 years. I know you mentioned Cowich and in your report, but so is the Aldergrove Ag Association. Now, it's been through some tough times, and one might really believe that their focus needs to be sharpened up on agriculture, and I think that the the board there recognizes that. And every year, they try and bring more agriculture into the fair. Of course, this year the fair is off, and next year maybe two, but I think it's an excellent opportunity to for outreach with more of an agricultural focus, and I think that they could just use some help or, you know, be involved a bit more to see that that can happen. So please put them on your list. They are still around. And I'm sure they'd love to be involved in more ways.
Absolutely. I think that's a really natural partnership.
Thank you. Thanks for your work.
Counsel.
Yes, thank you, worship, and thank you very much, Ava, for your presentation. It was very interesting, as well as the report. So kudos to the organization that has already somewhat preceded this study in a sense that I know historically there have been different types of institutes, and I think it's really important, especially as we go forward, as is pointed out in the study, that because of pressures for urbanization and land economics and many other things, it can be more challenging to try and maintain an agricultural base. So so those are kind of, you know, just statements, I think, that are really embedded in a lot of the analysis that has been done, which I think is particularly important. As we all know, that because of the parcelization of the properties in the Township of Langley, many of them are challenging, in a sense, for somebody to develop as a agricultural production if somebody wanted just to be a farmer. There's auxiliary uses and supplementary uses, but just the overall idea of that. I did want to put a plug in for the fact that I know you referred to the the Delta Institute. But just in consideration of climate action, that there is, they have, I don't think it's an adjunct, but I think they're associated potentially in some way, the Delta Farmland and Wildlife Trust. Because I think that it's an important consideration. One of the issues that can come up is potentially the challenge between the right to farm and the and the degree to which we can keep certain geographical or, you know, geophysical features, let's say, in property. It's not always a problem, but it can be. And so the idea that we have a symbiosis between some of the things that go on with waterways and other, you know, plants and things like that on a on a farm site. And just to make sure that that integration goes forward, because I think increasingly that's going to be important in terms of climate change and and other initiatives that we have on the go. So I just wanted to put that in there, that I think that that might be also an important corollary to the work that's being done, if you haven't already considered that. So thank you very much.
You have consequences.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really interesting report, and just wanted to thank you very much for for bringing this account to council. I want to follow up on something that Counselor Arneson mentioned, and it was the the farming of cannabis, and if that came into this report and and what? Yeah, that was just kind of a question I had as well.
It did not. We weren't looking at at really any specific use of farmland. I know the Farmers Institute has made a rule for its membership that members must have, or at least voting members must have farm status. So depending on, I'm not sure what the the state is of that for whether cannabis producers are considered farmers under the B.C. assessment regulations, but that would influence that dynamic. But no, the the topic didn't specifically come up.
I noticed that you you have 4H clubs listed as one of your in your report, so it was nice to see that you got those young, young people involved. So thanks again for your report.
Great.
Counsel.
I just, just, I'll keep it short. A lot has been said. Ava, there's, you've done a lot of tireless work, and thank you very much on behalf of myself, and that does, okay, that all started wrong. You guys did a really good job. You worked really hard. This is an independent voice for agriculture. I'm certainly going to endorse it and did a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I had a couple of questions. So the the Farmers Institute has already been formed, and is there any, how's it being financed? Does it cost to the township, is it being self-financed?
Currently, it is self-financed through membership fees, but they're fairly nominal. So the Farmers Institute does not currently have any significant financing.
By volunteers. It's good to see the volunteers out there. And the, later on, there's a recommendation on the agriculture enhancement and economic enhancement committee regarding receiving and endorsing these recommendations. And I'm just, I'm just curious, maybe you've mentioned it, but can you clarify why you need an endorsement from the township? I recognize the request for having a member of the institute sit on the on the committee, our advisory committee, on agriculture, but I was wondering why the endorsement when you're an independent organization, advocate for farmers and agriculture with various government agencies, including, you know, including our government's federal authorities, and that will also be self-confirmed.
Sorry, I can't quite make out everything you're saying. Can you repeat the the question?
Because it's my, so the Farmers Institute, in in the recommendation later on in the agenda, the our advisory committee recommends that we receive and endorse recommendations. I'm just wondering why you need our endorsement, other than maybe the request to have a member of the institute sit on our advisory committee, which I understand if you're wishing to remain independent. I'm just, this is kind of unclear and why you need the municipal endorsement of the organization when it's an independent organization.
Right, so the the study itself was essentially commissioned by the Township of Langley. So the the funding for conducting the research is coming from So the the funding for conducting the research is coming from township. And the, and I I believe. Accepting or receiving the report is is sufficient to fulfill. That commitment, but there were also specific recommendations to the township of Langley, as as you mentioned. Having a representative from the Farmers Institute on the A E E C. But there were a couple other specific items there as well. That that we would recommend to to the township to consider as policies. Does that, does that answer your question?
Thank you very much for your presentation, and I don't see any further. Further questions for council, so thank you. A lot of good work you've done.
Great, thank you.
We'll just ask the power of the delegations. So we're going to go back on our agenda. To C one, the delegations are waiting. Ms. Andrea Atkinson is the first one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council.
Sorry, just just to start off, welcome here, and just so you know, you have five minutes to make your delegation to council. If there's any questions, we'll be out in a minute.
My name is Andrea Atkinson. I am a resident of Volnik Grove and the president of the Topham Elementary Parent Advisory Council. I'm here to request that the township of Langley implement a thirty kilometer an hour speed zone on two sixteenth street at Topham Elementary. Topham currently has three hundred students in twelve divisions. It was built to accommodate up to four hundred and fifty students in fourteen classrooms. With the rate of growth Langley is experiencing, this will soon be a full school. Topham has been in existence since nineteen sixty-three on what we now call two sixteen street. La Col Voyageur was the original building. Our school population is diverse in cultures and socio-economic backgrounds. But what makes it even more unique is that Japanese as a second language is taught from kindergarten to grade seven. My two daughters are students at the school in grades two and four. Both have been attending Topham since kindergarten. We have a vibrant community of students, parents and staff who are passionate about living and upholding the school's values. The school mascot is a tiger, toro in Japanese, so fittingly, the school motto is PAWS. P A W S, which stands for polite and respectful, always kind, we can do it, and safety. We, the PAC, are currently working with Urban Systems, a consulting firm, to implement safe active travel to school. Working with a consulting firm was partly funded by a Vision Zero grant from Fraser Health. According to data collected by Urban Systems, the majority of students live within three kilometers of the school. A survey was taken to identify ways in which Topham could promote safe active travel for its students. In order to reduce traffic and air pollution, to promote health and movement. As well as to encourage children to get to know their neighborhood better, just to name a few. When the survey was completed in February of this year, fifty-eight percent of the respondents' children. Used an active mode of transportation at least once within the school year. That is, they walked, biked, or rolled. Thirty-two percent of the respondents said their children were driven to school. We are working to take that number down. Since the lockdown, we have seen an increase in pedestrian traffic, my kids being part of it. In fact, my immediate neighborhood has implemented a walking school bus that the PAC plans on expanding in the near future. If that survey were taken now, the number of students choosing active travel would be much greater. Now, since two hundred and sixteen streets, since it has opened, we have, sorry, the interchange has opened. We have also seen an increase in vehicle and truck traffic. Many of these, many of these vehicles exceed the posted fifty kilometer an hour speed limit, many of them being commercial trucks. Topham is situated at the top of a hill which for many drivers is encourages speeding on the downhill. In addition, visibility is reduced approaching the top of the hill, another factor affecting safe school travel. On average, the braking distance for a medium-sized vehicle traveling fifty kilometers an hour. With good tires on a smooth dry road is thirty-five meters or a hundred and fourteen feet. That's about three yellow school buses long. Factor in the rain, inexperienced drivers, trucks, we're looking at more yellow school buses. The point is this, reducing the speed on this road will reduce the chances of severe injuries and fatalities. Higher speeds reduce motorist peripheral vision and impact their reaction times. We need slower speeds on two sixteen street so that it can be a safe street for our schoolchildren. So in addition to this presentation, I am submitting a community petition with over five hundred signatories. Requesting a thirty kilometer an hour speed zone on two sixteen street at Topham Elementary. I'm also submitting a letter of support from medical health officer, Dr. Emily Newhouse, from the Fraser Health Authority. Dr. Newhouse's letter supports the Vision Zero strategy for Topham. And if I may, I'd like to read some of the comments made by signatories on the petition. From one, it's all elementary schools deserve a thirty kilometer zone on the road most of the children cross to get to school. Only, it's only right that the kids at the school have the comfort and safety as others do. And lastly, keep kids safe and slow down traffic coming through the interchange. Two sixteen street is a residential area with many pedestrians. In conclusion, as Topham PAC president, I am requesting speed reduction to thirty kilometers an hour. At Topham and more broadly, the Vision Zero strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Whitmarsh has a question. Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, yes, thank you for coming today. I'm just wondering, when you say at Topham. Where where would the thirty kilometers start and end on on two sixteen? In in your in your opinion, where do you think it would be or should be?
In the in the school area, I would say probably just at the bottom of each hill. So start and end.
Okay, so you're not talking from eighty-eight to ninety-six?
No, not not the entire road, no.
Talking more specific, just around the school, maybe a few hundred meters before and after the school?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you very, very much for coming, Mrs. Atkinson. There is a park, because our kids just play soccer there all the time. There's a park there. Is is there not a speed limit for the parks right now currently, if I may? No, there's not, okay. So basically, as councillor Whitmarsh has said, it would be an opportunity to. Put it on a traditional school zones during school hours and park hours, of course, right? Is that correct with you as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Counselor.
Thanks, Your Worship, and thanks for your delegation, and I know we have some more probably coming on the same issue. And we've had, as as you probably are aware, a magnitude of requests from the area. From certain people that are very active in this issue. But I was just taken back by your, not taken back, but I was intrigued by your comment, and and this is so so often the case where you said. That people are not obeying the posted speed, so I know that it's far more severe if you're in a school zone, and so it should be. But unfortunately, we haven't been able to have Speed Watch operating during COVID, and I'm wondering if, you know, I can. Put that to staff at some point during this meeting to find out when we can relaunch that program, because that does provide. You know, the radar screens and and people that are monitoring the speed and trying to encourage people to do the proper speed. The other thing is, when you mentioned commercial vehicles, we should really be getting in touch with the CVSC, that's Commercial Vehicle. Safety Equipment People or whatever they're called, because they are also tasked with making sure that. Commercial vehicles obey the law, so. I'm not sure where we're going to go with your request, but certainly, in the meantime, and certainly we should be doing this all the time. Is making sure that we have the proper authorities there keeping an eye. If people are breaking the law, no matter whether the speed is thirty or fifty or sixty or ninety, whatever it is. If they are exceeding that, they should be, you know, they should be looked after, so. Maybe we could send a request to the Commercial Vehicle Section to patrol that area in the interim, and certainly I would hope. That Speed Watch might get going, and that will help, no matter what decision council makes on your request. Make sense?
Yeah, no, and I and I agree. You know, we have had flashing speed signs just recently installed on the street. And I have seen some police vehicles with radar, trying to, you know, keep the speed in check. I think, I mean, let's 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 put the commercial vehicles aside, let's just say the speed limit itself. You know, it it's not really an issue of our people speeding, it's the issue is. Is that we have many schoolchildren on that street. If you've ever been down that street before school and after school. You'll see most, most of the kids that live around there walking home and or walking to school, and so. You know, I did mention that, you know, a car going fifty kilometers an hour on a smooth, dry road. Would take, it's, you know, a hundred and fourteen feet to stop, right? So at fifty kilometers an hour, that impact is 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 quite tragic on a child. And, you know, as as one person says on the petition, it's only right that kids at the school have the comfort and safety. As others do, so you know, what makes, why, why, why is it that other schools have thirty kilometers an hour? School zone where we don't? Are they more special? Are the kids more special there? I, you know, that's that's just one of the. One of the the points that we'd like to bring across.
Yeah, and so, Your Worship, I think we should probably hear if if staff is prepared to give that answer, because certainly that is not the case. There is, there is no. Grading of who's more important than who, but there is a reason, I suppose, of the way that road is made up, so hopefully we'll get that answer through during this meeting.
Yes, I hope so too.
There are requirements that the township follows that is equal to all schools, and one of them is is school. And so that's just one of them. There's several other criteria that come into play, whether it's a thirty kilometer school zone or not. But everyone is treated equally based on certain criteria that followed by the following.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Worship, and thank you very much for the delegation, as well as for the petition information that's been presented. I've had occasion to be involved in the Topham School Safe Travel Plan, and I know the township. Has been very involved, and they actually are coming up with a report that hasn't been formally received yet, and I think. A lot of the feedback that's come from those individuals will be helpful, because. It was a number of stakeholders from different perspectives talking about safety and crosswalks and things. My other comment, and you've alluded to this already, is the speed reader boards. Because when I went up today, I could see that there, I think, were a couple that were installed in the two school zones there. And I'm wondering if it's been your observation that that has made any difference from your, you know, perspective as to. Potential changes to driver patterns.
Um, I think it has, but, you know, I I I'm not standing. At the road all the time, and so I'm I'm usually walking my children to school. So I I would say that it has made an impact for many people in my in my neighborhood, but I can't say for others. Who are coming through, and especially people that are not familiar with that neighborhood. And and as well, I think in one of the, one of the comments that I made about how speed. It's it comes from a report that it's called the NACTO Designing Streets for Kids Guide. I didn't mention it in my in my speech here, but, you know, I did read that sometimes wider roads. Also cause people to speed more, so I think that having that road as wide as it is. Usually will contribute to the speed regardless of a flashing speed sign.
Yeah, thank you, and just one final comment, and maybe it's something that staff has been looking into, but. When I was in the area today, I was observing the traffic and the speed. But what I wondered was, because driver training is such that when you see a school zone sign per se. That everybody recognizes and it resonates with people that this is a school zone, and. I think that there is some merit in looking at that just to symbolize that this is a very specific area. I know currently that there is writing on the pavement in front to make sure that people know that there's a school zone there. But I I think that one of the things that would be helpful is to actually have a speed limit posted. So that people could recognize that this is what the anticipated speed limit is, and also. If it were, in the event that there was a police patrol, that you would be charged with speeding, should you go beyond the posted speed? So those are just my comments.
Thank you, councillor. I do, I do agree that we should have a speed limit posted on the school signs. And I I would ask that that speed limit be thirty kilometers an hour.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for coming and speaking to us. This issue has been such a major concern up in that area. For a long, long time now, and I think it's wonderful that you've collected five hundred signatures. And brought them forward to us. I, for one, am very supportive in trying to make sure this happens. And I hope that the mayor will allow us to put a referral motion to staff to get a report. On how soon this can be done at the end of the meeting, so thank you for your time and all your effort.
Thank you so much, councillor Richter.
And thank you very much for presenting. Some more questions from council, and there is a report put on, and hopefully you've got a copy of that. It's a very, very detailed report, might help answer some of your questions, and we want to take a look at that. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, Mayor Fritz.
A point of information, Mr. Mayor? Oh, yeah, I I you're coming, you're breaking up a bit. I'm not sure, it was just me, but I hear you're breaking up a bit. And I know one of the, one of the delegations had a hard time reading it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna change mics while I'm listening to the presentation, so thanks. Okay, so Ms. Marina McLean, welcome here, and just for information, you have five minutes to present.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Marina McLean, and I live in Madison Park in North Langley. I am a resident of Wong Grove since nineteen ninety-seven. I am here this afternoon to request that the township of Langley implement a thirty kilometer per hour limit zone. On two sixteen street at Ecol de Voyer. Please follow along with these slides that I have sent you before the presentation. The Ecol is thriving, vibrant Francophone school. The Ecol, it's a kindergarten to grade seven school. The Ecol benefits Langley residents with the unique option of Francophone institution. And covers a very big catchment area in Langley. We are very lucky to have a call in Langley. The Ecol is located on the corner of two sixteen street and eighty-eight avenue in North Langley. It's excellent school location has been a longstanding tradition, starting with Topham Elementary School. This location has been serving Langley schoolchildren for over fifty years. My three children have all attended Ecol. I am still close with many of the families at the school. I also live nearby. This school has a playground which is popular with neighbors after school and on the weekend. We are concerned with the changes that the call faces with the opening of the Highway One interchange. Even before the interchange opened, a study of the crashes near the school showed that the crash rate is the highest compared. To any other school in Langley. In fact, comparing the crashes at their call with other schools shows, show us the graph that I sent to you. Schools on arterial roads with no speed reduction have very high rates of crashes. Schools on non arterial roads have lower rates of crashes. However, North Other, which is another arterial school. Which is in a in a busy arterial road, has a thirty kilometer speed zone. And has the fewest crashes. which is in a, in a busy arterial road, has a thirty kilometer speed zone and has the fewest crashes. The city of Surrey is implementing thirty kilometer zone at school on arterial roads. We too need safety for our schoolchildren who is, like, who use these roads. A Francophone school should not be discriminated against. The school was there before the interchange. Already, there is more traffic and trucks at the school. On the very first day of the interchange opening, there was an accident at the interchange. Can you believe that? All that is enough evidence for a thirty kilometer per hour zone. But just in case isn't, here's a community petition I present with over three hundred signatures of people who are supporting this cause. We have to also mention that the Ecole is a small school with about a hundred students. So for us to gather three hundred signatures, it means a lot. And I give, I wanna give you some examples of some people who has comments like, "My children are at Ecole de Voyages and I have sent, I have seen the way people speed, speed down the road going faster than the limit, limit posted." Treat all elementary schools the same. If you want kids to walk to school, make their trip as safe as possible. I am signing this because it's very unsafe to have large trucks going past two elementary schools faster than fifty kilometers. The speed limit needs to be thirty kilometers. And there are many, many more comments. I am submitting this petition, which represent, like I mentioned before, three, over three hundred people as part of written submission to my delegation. In conclusion, I am requesting, on behalf of all these supporters, a thirty kilometer speed limit zone on two sixteen Street at Ecole de Voyages. Thank you.
Thank you. New set, new headset, can you hear me? It's coming through? Oh, I get a big thumbs up, okay. You have to be better. Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, you're a lot better. You're, you're sounding like a movie star now. Bonjour Madame McLean, hombre español amiga?
Yes, I speak Spanish, my half an English, and my kids speak three languages. Like, we're supporting cultural ethnicity, as you can see, but I'm here to, yeah, about the...
But anyway, that's not the reason, I just wanted to welcome you for coming.
No, no, that's fine, and, and I really appreciate, I really appreciate, I, I love to speak Spanish, obviously. I don't speak French, my, my husband do, and my kids.
Okay, so I wanted to say, I, I have friends, I go visit them all the time, and I drive that route, and now with the newer interchange as well. It makes sense, and I know that one other councillor said that, you know, we're certainly looking at report, looking at the, but it makes sense, well, you're right at the school, it's right at the intersection at eighty-eight there and two sixteen there. And whenever I drive by, whether it's day or night, it just makes sense to slow down by the park and school. So certainly, I guess you're looking for the same measures as, at the beginning of the school park, and then obviously there's a street light there as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much, Mr. Councillor Ferguson.
And Councillor Whitmarsh has a question.
Yeah, thank you for coming today and presenting to us. I, I drive that road a fair bit on there, and I noticed that in the last few months since the interchange has come through and been getting ready, that the road has had quite a bit of different curbing done and some medians put into the middle of the road that has sort of narrowed the driving lane, as well as a fairly wide walking lane has been put in, or is being put in, I guess, I don't know if it's quite done yet, but along the side. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you've noticed that because of the curbing and the median that's been put in, the narrowing of the road, if, if the traffic is, has slowed down some coming up into, driving north from eighty-eight towards, from Telegraph up to eighty-eight, if you've noticed the slowing down of traffic due to the narrowing of the road and the curbing that has been put in already?
Yeah, I have noticed that they slowed down a little bit. It's fifty kilometers, like, I'm very conscious of my speed every time I drive, but I see people go down to seventy. We have to also consider that all the students at the Ecole, they're boss team, and that these little bosses turning in into the school. So my concern is that a truck or a car is just gonna T-bone some of those, you know, the school bosses which are, which are small. Maybe, just answering your question, I see that slowed down a little bit, but I can still see a fifth, maybe a sixty, seventy kilometer.
Okay, so the curbing helps, but thirty kilometer speed limit is still a request that you would have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councillor Blair.
Thank you very much, I don't see any further questions, so thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your support and your attention, thanks.
Your next delegation is Ms. Geraldine Jordan.
Alright, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Geraldine Jordan and I live at number fifty-two, eight-eight-eight-eight, two-sixteen Street. I'm here this afternoon to request that the township of Langley adopt Vision Zero as an obligation to protect the freedom of residents to safely travel across her community. The plan should prioritize the township's vulnerable road users, especially schoolchildren, and protect everyone's right to safe mobility. I'm also here to request improved road safety for our schoolchildren on two-sixteen Street. My neighbors Andrea Atkinson and Marina McLean have already presented these specific requests with two community petitions for thirty kilometers an hour on two-sixteen Street atop a elementary school and Ecole de Voyages. In this presentation, I will talk about Vision Zero as a safe mobility strategy which has been adopted nationally and provincially. I will talk about what Surrey is doing for its elementary schools on arterial roads. The case will be clear. We need speed reduction at our schools on arterial roads, and more broadly, we need Vision Zero for the township of Langley. You can follow along on the slides that I have submitted with this written submission. So everyone knows someone who's been in a crash and perhaps has been seriously injured with lifelong debilitating injuries. You may even personally know someone who has died or someone who has been impacted by a family member's death. In fact, ICBC reports that each year over two hundred and fifty children between the ages of five and eighteen suffer injury from crashes while walking or biking in the lower mainland. Even more tragically, some children are killed. Moreover, in the playground and school zones, forty-two children are injured every year. Road safety is not trivial. Road safety, as described by the province, has focused on low hanging fruit like impaired driving or high crash locations. And while this targeted approach has saved lives, our roads are still not safe because many crashes are diffused along the network and many factors contribute to the lack of systemic safety. Vision Zero is a strategy which considers road injuries and deaths as preventable, that is, they're not accidents. Vision Zero's strategy is to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. And the strategy is successful. The Vision Zero strategy uses a safe system approach, which states that human error is an unavoidable aspect of reality and that even the most responsible and prudent drivers can and do cause serious crashes. The safe system approach enables more ambitious progress by treating the road system as a product of numerous components, including safe roadway designs, infrastructure, speed limits, and enforcement, and that all these components complement each other. The system is designed so that a fatality or serious injury can only occur when gaps and weaknesses in the components line up in such a way as to allow an error to result in a fatality or serious injury. A road system designed according to the safe system approach ensures that one component or more is always in place to prevent a serious injury consequence. The city of Surrey has implemented Vis- Vision Zero. Surrey identifies victims on its roads as largely those vulnerable road users. In fact, fifty percent of Surrey's road victims that are seriously killed or injured are pedestrians, cyclists, or motorcyclists. Surrey also identified hotspots of crashes, showing that sixty-five percent of serious crashes are on five percent of Surrey roads, and eighty percent of collisions occur at intersections. Surrey is implementing many strategies for Vision Zero. One of these includes a thirty kilometer zone for elementary schools on arterial roads. Surrey knows that there is inequity in road safety, that is, some subgroups of people are disproportionately injured on their roads. Surrey is committed to equity for vulnerable road users. For an evidence-based approach, Surrey created a crash heat map to identify high crash areas. Similarly, I've created a crash heat map for Langley using ICBC data from twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen. You can see it in the slides that I've sent. You can see that the high crash areas are like Surrey at intersections and higher speed roads. In particular, you can see this pattern of high crash areas along arterial roads that intersect or cross over Highway One. If we use a business-as-usual case, we will see increasingly higher crash rates all along two-sixteen Street, right at the two elementary schools on arterial roads, disproportionately endangering vulnerable road users. In fact, on day one of the two-sixteen Street interchange opening, there was a crash. Since then, motor vehicle traffic volume continues to increase substantially. Truck traffic has increased at the two schools. Drivers increasingly fail to stop at the crosswalks. We need Vision Zero for these schools. In summary, we need Vision Zero for the entire township, and specifically with speed reduction at both Topham Elementary and Ecole de Voyages on two-sixteen Street. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Division Zero is intriguing, I just have a question. You, you focus a lot on street design and safety. Division Zero also work with preventative measures like teaching, you know, kids pedestrian safety, bicycling, cycling safety. There's a lot of pedestrian accidents, unfortunately, or defaults, you know, somebody, you know, runs out in front of a car and that sort of thing. Are, is, is there an educational component to this? For the human error part of it?
So it's hard to hear you, but I, I'm, so I'm understanding that you're wondering why the kids aren't paying attention.
No, 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 I didn't say that. Division Zero is intriguing, I, I think that's very intriguing, the, you know, process of looking for safe roads, and I totally agree with that. I'm just wondering, does it also include education for pedestrians and cyclists, especially schoolchildren? So I know when I went to school, we used to get that, you know, bicycling safety talk and that sort of thing, because a lot of accidents...
Good, so yes, Division Zero is a really comprehensive approach to looking at road safety. So, infrastructure, the engineering, enforcement, education, all of those components. So, so the thirty K zone is one component of that much larger, broader way of envisioning what road safety looks like. So yes, education for the students is also important, as well as drivers knowing that they're vulnerable road users, right? So yes, that would be another excellent approach that we need to have to complement, uh, speed limits that are reduced.
Appreciate that, thanks. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Hi, thank you for coming today and presenting. Good information. I, I'm wondering, I, I don't know a lot about Vision Zero, so I've just been doing a little bit of reading on it the last few days. And I know that the BC government introduced or developed a BC Road Safety Strategy in two thousand and thirteen. And I'm wondering how that roads, that BC Road Safety Strategy, or if maybe you're aware or not, and maybe I don't know, but how it relates to Vision Zero, or if it's similar to Vision Zero, or is Vision Zero something totally different than a strategy that, that the BC government sort of already adopted?
So, good question. So, the federal government, as well as the provincial government, have both looked at Vision Zero and incorporated in some way in a safe mobility strategy. So it may be called something a little bit different, but the idea behind that is the safe systems approach, which is the approach that we have to road engineering and road safety, which looks at eliminating all the gaps in the system. So there are many layers of prevention of accidents, so that, that an accident is not something that can happen, basically, because you've got way too many provisions in the system. It originated in the Netherlands and was adopted in Sweden in nineteen ninety-two and has been proven to be extremely effective in reducing crashes.
Okay. So, so i- if, if, if Langley was to adopt this sys- the Vision Zero, do you call it a system or a, what do you call it?
So Vision Zero would be like the overarching strategy, and embedded in that would be the safe systems approach.
Safe systems approach, okay, so it's a strategy now. If we were to adopt that, what, what does that look like on a practical level? Like, is there a, I, I'm, is it just us changing the way that we build roads? Or is it, is it, do we have, is it involving the public in some kind of task force committee? Or what, what, what do you know about what would be the, sort of the pragmatic or practical side of a, the community like us adopting Vision Zero? I'm not really grasping exactly what that means for, for, would mean for us in the township.
That's a really good question. So the city of Surrey has adopted Vision Zero. And probably the best starting place to take a look at what happened after they adopted it at, after a delegation at their, one of their council meetings.
Okay, that, that's helpful, I, yeah, it, it sounds, it sounds really good. I just don't really, I'm not grasping exactly what it means or what kind of change that means for us. But thank you for the delegation, it's an interesting concept.
Councillor Long?
Thanks, your worship, and the mic's a little bit better. Yeah, I appreciate your presentation, and, and, and Vision Zero goes a lot further, far beyond what we're, we've been talking about today, which was the two-sixteen, but it, it would be a philosophy that would have to be placed all over the place. How do you think Vision Zero would apply to two oh eighth Street, for example? I mean, right now we're saving up multi-millions of dollars to get a four-lane road in there. It seems to be a high priority for many of the council. But that would actually not fit with Vision Zero, would it? I don't think Vision Zero wants to see heavily trafficked driving lanes, is that correct?
So the concept behind Vision Zero is not to move, like, not to keep people from moving around. The concept is that we can avoid crashes and injuries and deaths. So how can we move people along two oh eighth Street safely in all different ways of moving? So vehicle, bike, walking, scooting, and keeping everyone on the road safe, including those people who are using motor vehicle transportation?
Yeah, good point. Well, it's a, it's a, as you say, it started in Europe, and I've been actually following it for a little while. And it's, it's certainly something that we should be looking at. Every, every city needs to look at how it can make the streets safer then. Thanks for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, worship, and thank you, Ms. Jordan, for coming today. I also just want to say thank you very much for all of your advocacy. I know that this is sort of a focus today to talk about the two-sixteenth interchange, but what we're speaking of really would be a, a safety strategy overall for all the roads in the township of Langley if we were to adopt this, this policy. So my understanding, just generally, is that the basis of this, if we were to have council direction to go forward, it's a way to gather information, as you're suggesting, that we have reference to where incidents has happened so that we can analyze what is the problem there and then use the methodologies that we understand in order to layer different components there so that all the different gaps would eventually be covered off, which I think, for me, aside from the initial investment of working with others and potentially having a budget line item, it seems that we'd be saving a lot of money in the longer term, you know, from accidents and just as a, you know, a community. So it, it just seemed, you know, the Surrey model, I know, is fairly new, but other communities have done this for some time. So just be interested in your, your comments about, you know, how you perceive this maybe in a timeline, for example, in the ti- in the township of Langley.
So a couple of comments. I don't think I could speak to the timeline, because obviously it'd be great if we had implemented this yesterday. But when we think about the cost to society of crashes, it's almost like we can't quantify, first of all, we can't quantify a death, how much that would actually cost to a family. But in terms of the cost to society, implementing Vision Zero would, we could argue that it could save money, and you could run some economics on that to show that that's the truth, right? In terms of hospitalizations or injuries recoveries. We can even think of the cost to the township, say of, there was an accident just a few weeks ago on University Drive at Lebonty, where there's a new crosswalk that's been installed. It's kind of a crosswalk in the middle of nowhere, but we'll still take it. And someone had run into the crosswalk post and obliterated. So that's a motor vehicle accident, no one was hurt. And someone had run into the crosswalk post and obliterated it. So that's a motor vehicle accident. No one was hurt. But that's a cost to the township to then repair that crosswalk, right? So if we can keep our motor vehicles driving safely on the road, we can eliminate crashes, and eliminate property damage and keep people safe, and I think that would be of great value to the township, and offset any cost that it would be costing us. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. I'm seeing any other questions, so thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to move on to reports to council. And E1 is development permit application number 101148. Dialogue design, 19705, please have a motion, please.
Moved.
Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Arneson. Any discussion, Counsel Richter?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question about how come it's been so long for this DP to come forward to us? I recall the, the presentations that were made, I think it was at least a couple of years ago, but I was just wondering what caused the delay. Thanks.
Mr. Sefi.
Thank you, Worship. I believe the presentation that Counsel Richter is referencing related to other improvements, other enhancements. This is an ongoing, I guess, exercise for the mall, and the mall owners and operators to continuously improve the mall. And this is not the one that was referenced earlier as part of the presentation. That work has already been undertaken. This one relates to other improvements along the northwest portion of the mall, and relates to the desire and the recognition by the mall owners and operators to provide a more pedestrian-friendly environment and more food-oriented activities.
Counsel Ferguson.
So I know it's a development permit. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I know it's a development permit, and they've gone through a number of steps already. I just, a couple of quick questions and submissions. I guess today they get written submissions. For the clerk's note for E1 Dialogue Design, my question is, um, I guess it's pretty sure there's none, none of this development is within the city, and the corollary question to that, did we receive any submissions from the city of Langley, if I may say this to the staff?
Your Worship, this, this, sorry. Yeah, thank you. This does not affect the area that is part of the city of Langley boundaries, or within the city of Langley boundaries. And as far as submissions, my understanding is, as of, as of new today, there have not been any submissions regarding this application.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just all the trouble with it. Anybody ask questions about the Willbrook Mall? It's, I guess it's split, with some is in the township, some is in the city. Thank you very much.
I see no further discussion. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Some isn't Surrey, dude.
And opposed? Here is unanimously. And we move on to E2, and this is development permit application number 101173, Best of Properties. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Davis. Any discussion, questions? Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I have a question to staff. So in looking through the report, as we always do, when there's a reference to guidelines in the back, this one in particular strikes me as an opportunity where we could have had a discussion, which I'm wondering if we did, about the potential for a green roof. So if this proponent is asking for further height and needs a DP variance, then I'm wondering, based on the fact that now what we're going to get, I know that they were already approved, and this is an addition to what they've already received approval for, but it seems that it would have been inherently valuable for that to have been a positive outcome for the township, especially as the renderings also show that in the future, buildings surrounding that will be taller, and we'll have to look down upon the, the roof that's being provided in this proposal. So that was my question to staff.
Thank you, Worship. So to clarify, the application that's in front of council today is not to increase the height. I think that's what was referenced by Counsel Arneson, that is not correct. What they're asking for is the conversion of the roof area to an open area for, I guess, activities in terms of like seating area, a leisure area for the office workers, to be able to take advantage of the roof space as an outdoor amenity area, a rooftop garden, if you will. And, and the actual, I guess, development permit, as Counsel Arneson referenced, was issued by council sometime in, with 2019. And, and because of the fact that this is considered to be a major amendment to the DP that was issued by council, is being brought forward to, to council for consideration. As far as a potential, I guess, use or, or potential conversion of the roof to green areas concerned, that is something that, that, I guess, does have financial implications, as well as functional constraints. But in the future, we can look at that as something that might be either a requirement of the process, or maybe even something that proponents can, can look at a bit more, I guess, seriously, in terms of other projects.
Thank you, through your worship, to Mr. Safi. I understand I, I'm misrepresented what you're saying about height variance. However, they are getting, from my perspective, substantial benefit from doing this. And so I'm just very supportive of the idea that we use any and all opportunities in order to enhance the environmental aspects of a building, especially one that, if you look at the massing of those two buildings, it, it is rather a large footprint in that area. And I certainly think that anybody who would work in that building, aside from the shrubs and trees that they have, and planters in their roof deck, would certainly benefit from some more vegetation there. So thank you.
Counsel Richter.
Yeah, if Counselor Arneson's making that a motion to amend by adding green components, or a green roof component, I'll second that. And I don't see why we couldn't do that. Why can't we just say, no, you want a variance? Okay, this is what a variance is going to have to include.
I couldn't hear the motion. All I heard was a second, so I don't know if there is a motion.
I, I'd be happy, excuse me.
First of all, I'd like to ask staff, Mr. Sefi, being that we're looking for him, citing a character, is motion such as this valid?
It's character.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'll ask Mr. Sefi for some clarification.
Thank you, Worship. The typical process, Your Worship, would be to require compliance with guidelines. We don't have any guidelines that actually indicate a requirement for consideration of green roofs. The naval plan references at a very high level environmental objectives, social objectives, as well as economic objectives. However, there's no reference to green roofs. So that is something that staff would be looking to, and applicants, and, and I guess, potential applicants in terms of making investments in, in the township.
So, being that this is a development permit, to make a change at this stage, such as this, that would be done for zoning, rezoning would be more appropriate, but at this point, without, I don't know, is it, I don't think it's appropriate for council to make changes at this stage?
Well, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm asking Mr. Sefi, so then I'll get back to the, to the motion. Mr. Sefi.
That is correct, Your Worship, because, as I said, such a move would have significant cost implications and, and functionality issues. It would not be my, my, I guess, interpretation of council's deliberation currently, is that if this was to be rejected, it would not necessarily mean that the, the DP that was issued is, is no longer valid. Obviously, that is something that the applicant will be proceeding with. At this stage, I don't think that there's a way that we can require the installation of green roof. That would be something that council can consider as part of the rezoning application.
So, so based on that information, the motion would be out of order, so we'll see.
Well, I disagree with that. I think it's part of character.
That's fine. That's a challenge to the chair, so I'm going to call the vote to sustain the chair. I can't vote in it, so a vote in favor sustains the chair's ruling, a vote opposed does not sustain.
Can we still have discussion first, before we?
No, there's a challenge to the chair. I have to, I have to get a ruling on the challenge to the chair at this point on this motion. So the motion, there's a challenge, so a vote in favor sustains the chair, a vote in opposition does not sustain the chair, and a tie vote sustains the chair. So I can't vote. So I'm going to show of hands, all those.
You did, sorry, I didn't quite get this.
So I've made a rule, I've made a ruling on this motion, saying that it is not okay this time. So I've called, so there's been a challenge to the chair by Counsel Richter. So now there's no debate, it's just a show of hands, those in favor, yeah.
Okay, so it's going to be in favor. Okay, okay.
If it's, yeah, so, call the question, those in favor sustaining the chair, raise your hands.
What's that mean? Ship?
Support the chair, you raise your hand. Okay, so are those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Counsel Richter, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Woodward opposed, the chair sustained, so.
No, now just a minute. Counselor Kunst is not there. It's a tie vote. It's a defeat vote.
I didn't see, I saw only, I'm sorry. Okay, who, who is opposed? I'll try it again. Counsel Richter?
I'm opposed.
Counsel Arneson, Counsel Woodward, and Counsel Davis. The chair is sustained on a tie vote. Thank you. So now we'll move on.
No, excuse me, a tie vote is a defeat vote, isn't it?
No, I just explained. So there's eight, there's two, there's eight of them, seven. Oh, so there's, oh, sorry, yeah. Okay, so the, so we, the chair is not being sustained, this is clarified by the clerk.
Well, Your Worship.
So, so there is a motion on the floor now, and it is to.
Before you entertain the motion, could you continue with the speakers, because I had something that might contribute to this. Can you hold the motion at least for now?
I'll ask, I did, there's a mover and a seconder, motions on the floor.
Well, can Counselor Long?
Yeah, Counsel Richter is okay with Counsel Long just adding us to this, with him avoiding the motion.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, Counsel Long, go ahead.
Appreciate that, yes, because, I mean, when we talk about green roofs, what are we talking about here? First of all, from what I can see from the development, this variation that they're asking for is of a benefit to the folks in the building. It's not asking for extra density or more office space or anything. It's providing an amenity space for the occupants. It's a very positive thing for the community. So I think it's, to start with, I, I see it as a very positive thing, and I already see trees up there. So a green roof might eliminate the ability to have a gathering place on the top of that building for those workers in there. So that, I don't think is a very positive thing for the, for us in the township to say, well, you can't have a gathering spot, because we'd rather put a green roof. But all I was going to say is, I already see some vegetation on there. Could we not just ask staff for the proponent to increase the amount of trees he's got up there? I see a couple of planters. It looks, you know, doesn't look like a lot of greenery, but certainly that could be increased in a request, and I'm sure the proponent would probably be quite happy with that. So we wouldn't have to go down this road of a green roof, because I think my favorite saying is unintended consequences. If we ask it to be a green roof, it may not be very human-friendly, right? Because how are you supposed to gather up there and enjoy the view and relax and, you know, increase your, your mental state and, and feel good about life, when now you can't go up there, because it's a bunch of cabbages? So I, I, if the motion's on the floor, I would suggest that we, we don't go, or maybe I suggest an amendment. And, and can I hear from staff through you, Worship, could we not just ask the proponent to put a few more shrubs and, and planters up there, to make it more attractive and more green?
Counsel could ask, that, bye. Okay, I'm going to, Counsel Richter, your hand is still up, could you speak through the motion?
Worship, did I, I didn't, did I get an answer to my question?
No, I, I just said that, okay, Mr. Sefi can weigh in, but we can ask for that, yes.
You can, or can't?
Thank you, Worship. You're, you are correct. Staff can ask. But as I said, just to remind council, there is already a development permit that was authorized by council last year. So this is a variation that's been put forward by the applicant as reference to enhance the functionality of the building, potentially to provide for an additional amenity on the roof. If council chooses, well, I guess council has several options. Either approve this as presented, reject it, or add conditions to it. Keeping in mind that, should the applicant choose not to, I guess, agree to additional enhancements, they're always within their rights to proceed with the development permit that was approved last year, and, and proceed with that. That is the option that the applicant would have.
So, Your Worship, to follow up on that comment, I'm sure the applicant would be fine to increase the amount of foliage up there, but the motion that apparently is on the table, which I don't agree with, is asking them to go back to the drawing board and put on a green roof, which is going to change the whole design, and staff has said.
No, no, point order. He's misinterpreting. We asked for components of a green roof, so more green components on that roof. It's all that's asked for.
Excuse me, Counsel Richter, I don't, I don't appreciate you biting in like that. Counsel Long did have the floor, and so he has asked to speak to the ask for. And the answer is very clear. Counsel Long answered very clear that we could ask for more, so.
Yeah, okay, maybe we better hear the motion. The motion would just have a green roof.
That's, that's what I heard, so that's what we, that is, Ms. Bauer, the motion, Counsel Long, Counsel Long. Ms. Bauer, the motion was to change it to a green roof. No, what's the motion? Shake your head.
I believe the motion was to add aspects of the green roof.
Aspect of the green, okay, right on. Okay, I'm going to move through the list. Counsel Richter, your hand is still up, can you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, and, and I just want to say that it's adding components. I mean, if you look at that picture that was up there, they could just add grass, and people could sit on the grass. That's green. It's, it's a matter of, let's get rid of some of the concrete that's in that building, and there's a lot of concrete. You can see it in the, in the picture that was shown. So I, I really don't appreciate, Mr. Mayor, when Counselor Long misinterprets a motion, and you tell me to butt out. That's not right.
Sorry. Counsel Richter, I did not tell you about the ongoing process of procedure.
Yes, you did tell me to butt out. You can go back and listen to the tape. I heard butt out.
I'm sorry, it didn't come up. Maybe I said butt in the question, but it wasn't butt out to you. I wouldn't be that disrespectful, Counsel Richter.
No, go and listen to the tape.
Counsel Richter, please. Who's next on the list here? Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I appreciate the opportunity, although it is challenging, because more or less, as Mr. Safi has outlined, that there is a proposal that would already, by default, take place. But I, I believe, and I'm glad we have an opportunity, to, to rectify what is the intention of the motion, which is not to create an engineered green roof. I would never impose that after the fact on a proponent. But since a proponent would like to be able to utilize area of their roof structure that already is going, you know, to be in play, I sincerely feel that as part of our overall policy objectives, it would be very positive and within our ability to request, for example, a condition that a certain percentage of that area needs to be covered by landscape, and that we have staff that can work with the proponent in order to decide and figure out what would be best under those circumstances. So I can characterize some trees in a big pot as, yes, it's vegetation, but I certainly feel that it doesn't go anywhere near where we should be going in terms of the loss of habitat and our climate action policy, which clearly should be moving towards having more environmental elements involved in our buildings. So from my perspective, I think it would be a condition to send back for the proponent to work with staff, so that a, I don't even know what percentage to say on the fly, so I wouldn't say something. But to me, you cannot take away the utility for the purpose that they desire, but at the same time, there's a lot of room to put some other components up there that do not constitute a green roof per se, but they are elements of what we should be working towards. So whatever that looks like, I think we should be doing that.
Counsel Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, can I have the motion read again, please, because I have some suggestions? If I may, through the chair.
I think I'm sure.
What was it? Was that it? We couldn't, couldn't hear anything. Sorry.
Yeah, neither I could I hear a thing.
Motion currently read.
You know, I still can't hear anything.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, Mr. Mayor.
We're working, we're working on it.
Oh, sorry.
The motion currently reads that components of a green roof be added.
Okay, I would like to make a friendly emo- emotion that it may or may not be friendly, but I would hope it is that, uh, that the township of Langley, uh, mayor and staff ask the proponent to consider extra green, whatever the word, green roof components, and that would be ask and consider. If I may, if it's a friendly, friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'll, I'll, I'll ask for seconder.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, so on, thank you, it's a movement second of the amendment. Uh, there's hands up on the first amendment, so this is on amendment to the amendment, uh, we can start over again, we'd like to speak to that.
I would.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't consider this.
I, I just wanna go through, uh, Counsel Long, can you wish to speak to amendment to the amendment? I'm gonna go through the list this year.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to see this amendment, because I was, you know, when you mentioned green roof, I think it gives a whole different connotation. And I think that we've had a bit of a discussion where it's a nice, a friendly amenity space, that's gonna be very beneficial to, to, you know, to everything, and adding more green to it, and I don't know if I heard the exact wording from Council Ferguson, but adding more green components to it, I think is perhaps where the original mover, Counsel Arneson, was heading, uh, and, and I don't like those words, green roof in there, because that to me means something con- con- considerably different. So if we're, I think we're heading in, in the right direction, in a similar direction, your worship, but we'd like to see more uh, green aspects, uh, to the roof and, and that can be, uh, added as a condition or a recommendation that, uh, that the staff discuss that with the proponent, and hopefully, uh, it'll all be wonderful, am I correct?
Thank you. Council Richter.
Yes, um, I don't, uh, support this motion, I think it's, um, too soft. I mean, this amendment, uh, to consider, so what, they're gonna come back and say, well, we considered it and it costs too much, so we're not doing it? No, not good enough, you're getting a substantial amenity here. Uh, it had to go through another DP process, which proves it's a substantial amenity. And so you, you, we get to tell you what we wanna see in return for that amenity, and this is what we wanna see, so I do not support the amendment, it's weasel words.
Thank you, uh, Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think this is a, a challenging, uh, one, because I, I certainly think that the green components, uh, you know, would be nice, and I think it would be good to have. Um, probably we should have had this discussion much earlier before we approved the, uh, first DP, uh, but we didn't, and so we now have a DP that's approved, the people could go back, the applicant could go back and just build uh, the previous one that's already been approved for, and this township would then lose out on an amenity that would be a benefit to our community and to those who, uh, use that building. Um, and yet I do think that having some components, I think we need to really clearly define what we mean by components. Uh, that seems to be part of our challenge, is that we've gone from having a, a fully instituted green roof uh, down to as low as adding a few trees and pots. So what is exactly we, what do we mean by that, and maybe we need to clarify that? I think asking the applicant to consider, um, is, is appropriate, but I think we need to be more specific on what we're asking them to consider. And be, be a, be cons- uh, specific on that, ask them to consider those things, and then, and then they can come back, and we still have the opportunity, but I, I think rather than voting on it today, I think we should ask them to staff to meet and talk about green components and what that could look like, what the possibilities might be, um, rather than, and, and be clear on what we're asking for, because I think right now council's not clear on what they're asking for.
Counsel Davis.
Thank you very much, um, to me, I, the pitcher to add, um, I, I understand, I would totally support a green roof. A green roof is a green roof with a membrane that covers the whole roof, that actually protects, yeah, there you go, um, that actually protects this top part, that's the roof, this is a patio. To put the word green in that patio is good, but it's, that's going to be very, like, I, some have said already, it's a soft word. Um, we're doing this, like, okay, well, we need four more trees there, so we put more, four more planters, and next spring, when they, they can move them off, you know, like, a green roof is a green roof. There's no reason it shouldn't have a green roof, other than it costs the proponent a lot, it could cost them, uh, money, and, uh, but in, in maintenance cost, it would be, um, it would be a lot, uh, better, uh, that is a green roof. So I guess where I, I'm a bit confused here, not confused, I don't know, I'd like to see more green, but, uh, that's going to be an amenity that, that, how do you control that? That, you know, do we, in the springtime, do we pull out more trees in the summer, in the wintertime, do we, you know, roll them back in, I'm, I'm worried, I understand exactly where it's going, but if we're gonna put a green roof on this thing, like, let, let's put a green roof on it, the whole, that, that whole top piece, that's the roof, this down here is a patio. Um, those are just my comments, I'm still, I'd like to hear what other people say.
Thank you, uh, Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship, um, I'm not in support of the amendment, not because I don't think that there is some, I'll call it wiggle room here, because it is challenging after the fact to try and apply some standard that we're anticipating. However, the, the voluntary aspect of it to me is a non-starter, because if they had wanted to put on a green roof or some component, they would have come forward with a plan like that. So, uh, we have to have some leverage in this, and I think our leverage is that we are actively encouraging them based on the fact that they would like to have a rooftop amenity, that we would like to have some percentage of their rooftop amenity in a green component. I don't know how to be more clear, except to say that we have very valuable and educated staff that do these kind of things all the time to work with proponents. So I think that this should be a condition, and if we have to send it back, and, uh, you know, for them to work together to come up with something that we can review, I think that would be most appropriate under the circumstances, thank you.
Uh, Council Woodward.
Yeah, thanks, I just, we have got, seem to have a lot of counselors talking to the, the main motion, not the actual amendment, so I'll, I'll speak to the actual amendment, and then if it passes or fails, I'll speak to the main motion, haven't had a chance to do that yet. Um, I don't support the amendment, it's pretty clear, if we request it, it won't be, won't be done, so I think that's an easy one for me, I don't support the amendment, thanks.
Council Whitmarsh.
Uh, uh, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Council Ferguson.
Yeah, oh, yes, thank you, you know, I, I can, the reason why I said it wasn't all that clear, and still not all that clear, you have some members of council, and, and God bless them, they're saying they want a green roof, okay, that's great. The motion doesn't say that, even the main motion doesn't say that, so if that one, if there's a need to change the motion, which I won't do to make it a complete and utter green roof, then that would be up to council. Okay, now I'm gonna ask the procedural question to staff and policy. Are we able to do this, are we able to make major changes at the bub- development permit? If I may, through the chair, whoever can answer that?
Mr. Backen.
Uh, thank you, worship, the, the test is going to be whether or not the, the modification falls within the definition of form, character, and sighting. As we've dealt with the issue of character, uh, from a council perspective, um, determining this matter should go forward, I suggest we dispose of the amendment, uh, which is effectively to consider, and if that, um, is successful, the issue may, uh, disappear, if it's unsuccessful, then we return to the original issue, which is, is character, uh, something that would embrace a green roof. At that point, we may wish to have more discussion and consider, uh, a momentary referral, uh, to actually, uh, review that with the appropriate parties, to see what the applicant's position is and what our position is, to determine if we can, uh, classify a green roof as being char- uh, a matter of character.
So I guess if I made you the chair as well, okay, so, okay, I'm an applicant, I actually put an application in at development permit, not at first, second, not at, uh, at third reading, but at, at development permit level, which is a high level, uh, after they've had readings. Uh, could I say it's a council memo, or let's just make it, uh, one story, are we able to do that? If I may, through the chair.
Uh, thank you, worship, um, uh, as characterized, I think the one story would be a reduction in density that would be, um, most likely defined as a use matter, it would be something that's beyond form, character, and sighting. Uh, if the density could be maintained with a different facade or a different, uh, I guess, a theme, then that would be something that might be permissible, if the density could be remained, but retained, but I think in this example, it was intended to show that a use, a change of use or change of density is not something that can be altered at the form, character, and setting stage.
Okay, well, uh, let me ask something that probably can be used as form, character, and so maybe I want the building, council could make a motion that the building be painted pink, we could do that, right?
Uh, a little bit of hesitation in terms of paint colors, but it certainly could have hues or, uh, references to, uh, earth tones or something of that nature, as opposed to something very specific, but ye- yes, effectively done right, you could, uh, do something under that, because it would be the form, character, and sighting you're relying on.
Okay, I was just, I was just wondering at what point in time an applicant, you know, mum and pop, whether it's a, whether it's a grocery store, or whether it's a small building, a small farm, whether council can, uh, kinda somewhere along the line jeopardize what indeed their, their vision for either the builder or the community, that's, that's all. I'm just trying to look at policy, what, what is, because we've had this discussion many, many, many times before, what form, character, and citing is, thank you.
You know, for the discussion, call the question on the amendment to the amendment, all those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Council Richter, Council Davis, Council Arneson, Council Woodward opposed, so the amendment to the amendment fails. Back to the amendment, uh, so, you know, for the discussion, we'll call the question on the amendment, all those in favor?
In favor.
And opposed, and froze, Council Ferguson.
I need to get some clarification.
Council Whitmarsh, I'm just gonna do the count, so.
You keep saying amendment, amendment, I have no idea what we're voting on here, so.
We're voting on the amendment, uh, the amendment that, uh, Council Richter had, the amendment, the amendment failed.
We've been to the main motion this entire time.
Excuse me, we're voting on the amendment, I'll call the question again, all those in favor of the amendment? Raise your hand.
Oh, no, no, the, oh, the, the original amendment?
Amendment, yes, your amendment, okay, those opposed?
Opposed.
Council Richter, I'm sorry, Council Whitmarsh, Merrick Rose, and Council Ferguson, the amendment ca- carries. We're now back to the main motion as amended, ready for the discussion, Council Woodward, the main motion as amended.
So now at this point, I actually would like to get some clarification on what's, what's gonna happen, so, because I'm not clear on components of a green roof either, I don't know what components means, and I'm not sure what the scope of a green roof, so if we're doing an engineered green roof, I'd like to know what percentage we're potentially requiring the proponent to do for that floor area, do we have any definition of components of our green roof and what the scope is that we're now potentially imposing?
I'll ask Mr. Second.
Because it's moot now, since it's been approved, so, okay, never mind.
Never mind, okay, thank you, uh, next, uh.
Your worship, just to, just to clarify, though, the suggestion was made that the, that the motion has been disposed of, right this point, we have the amendment approved, but the motion as amended is going forward. So right now, the motion is that it, uh, advance with the components of a green roof, which has two subsidiary issues. As Counselor Woodward pointed out, what does that mean, components? And secondly, does that motion fall within the scope of character as was previously discussed?
Great, Council Richter.
Uh, yes, at this stage, I'd like to make a referral motion back to staff for a discussion with the proponent on what additional green components will be added. Or green roof components will be added.
I'll second that.
Counsel Long seconds it. Uh, discussion on the referral. Counsel Richter, do you wish to speak to the referral?
Um, no, I think Counselor Woodward's raised a valid question, I think also Mr. Backen has made some, uh, uh, valid comments, and I think it's, uh, fair that, uh, that the staff sit down, uh, with the proponent to determine what additional green elements can be added to this, uh, roof and patio.
Counsel Long.
Well, I think Council Davis made the best point, because the, the roof is only a portion of the top, and then the rest is open patio, so it doesn't look as bad as, as the, I interpreted the original motion to be, a complete redesign of the building. But I think that no matter what happens, the component, uh, the proponent is going to have to, uh, uh, advance whatever they feel they can do, uh, it's gonna be a discussion with staff. And judging by the way this discussion's gone, the picture that comes back is gonna have to be something that council likes. And so let's give the proponent a chance to, to paint a new picture, uh, bring it back, and, uh, hopefully council will appreciate that one.
Yeah, I just wanted to get some, uh, clarification too, that if the report's gonna, potential, the referral would include some survey of, of how far we can go with this, because during your initial question and answer with Mr. Seifi, it was suggested that this would be beyond the scope of form, setting, and character, but then it was further contradicted that maybe it's not, so can, can I get some clarification on whether we're potentially over the line here or not, or do you wanna just refer it away and get that in writing?
Because I think Mr. Backen, with that information, yeah, I, I believe the, uh, uh, form, citing, character we discussed, it was substantially changed, and it's been, it's been mentioned by staff, but that the proponent could go back and just seize the original, uh, development permit that, that has been approved by council. So that is within their right, so, and council, uh, I did make a ruling, council didn't sustain, so I accept council's ruling that this is in our right to do, so, Mr. Backen.
Well, the, the answers were different prior to the roof, challenge to the chair, and subsequent.
Well, no, council's made a decision that, that my ruling was an error, so, and I have no problem with that, that's.
I think, I think along with Counsel Richter, you may need to re-watch the tape as well, okay, so I'll move on here. I would like to, um, also maybe try to be helpful here, because I'm a little concerned that we're gonna prefer this back with a condition for components of a green roof, and the proponent's simply gonna walk away from an improvement to the building and, and proceed with the prior DP, which may not be the outcome that we would actually want as a community, as a council, so I have some concerns here that, that this is not gonna come back, they're just gonna proceed under the old DP, I'm hoping the proponent is watching that, that, uh, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to, to bring this back with some inclusion, but not necessarily walk away from the desire to improve the exterior of the building. Uh, so I'm a little concerned that we're gonna, we're gonna throw the baby out with the bathwater here, and, uh, end up without a patio or a green roof, we're just gonna end up with the previous design, so I'm a little bit torn on this one, I'll support a referral to hope the discussion can continue, but, uh, would really want the proponent to ensure that they bring it back to council in some form, to give us a chance to, to debate this further, because I don't really like how this has gone down, this hasn't been handled properly. Uh, it's a perfectly reasonable referral, and it just hasn't been held properly, thank you.
Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I, I, I share some of the same concerns, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this going to uh, meet with the proponent to talk about, uh, components of a green roof when we as council don't really understand what that means. Uh, we're seeing some pictures that have almost a full roof with a very sma- uh, small deck, we see another picture that has a very small roof that where most of the deck is exposed and open. I've heard counselors talk about, we would put grass on the deck, and we could have people sit and participate in their deck on grass. Um, and I've heard all kinds of things, so it feels, I, I have no problem with the referral to staff, but it feels like to me, it should be referred to staff uh, to maybe give us some thoughts, first of all, about what components, uh, what could, in their mind, components of a green roof might be and present, and bring something back for council to discuss. Um, and secondly, whether we can actually do this, uh, or not, um, and recommend and require this, it doesn't seem to be part of form, setting, character, in my opinion, but I don't, I don't know that, I need to know from staff whether that's in fact true or not. And, and I have the same concerns that Counsel Woodward has, I think the proponent will look at it, look at the cost of it, look at a council that doesn't know what they really want, and just decide to go back to the original DP. And we won't get the benefit of amenity space, we won't have a green roof, we won't have any of it. And we'll find that we spent a good hour and a half talking about it, in the end, we just go back to the old DP. So I, I think this, I don't think that we're approaching this, uh, very well, and I think refer back to staff for a discussion with council is the first thing before we go back, uh, to, uh, the proponent.
Council Ferguson.
Yeah, I'm not gonna be supporting the referral back to staff, I think we've had a lot of discussion, if I was sitting with, listening to, uh, to discussion, I think many of us were to, to listen to ourselves, uh, through this process and listening to some of the uh, comments made by all of us, including myself, um, they would wonder, well, there'd be not, there'd been eight or nine different statements in a number of different directions. I've, I, I had, I didn't make a motion yet to make the building pink, but I think administrator said that, that, that's okay. But I didn't wanna put him on the spot, but I mean, the reality is, I really think there's um, some legalities regarding what we can do with form, character, and citing, this has come up before, it's not the first time it's come up, and we, we've had to rule on it, um, so, you know, the thing is, uh, maybe the guy might just decide, well, heck with you guys, I'll just put, go with the original, I, you, I don't understand a single thing that any of you said, including myself, so, uh, if I'm at fault, I'll. If I'm at fault, I'll let the person know and proceed accordingly.
Counselor Long?
How, how can we be so confused on something that seems to be reasonably simple in my mind? I thought the motion that we're discussing now was to refer it to staff to talk to the proponent and come back with, with a proposal that has more green in it. Is that not, your worship, what we're voting on at the moment? Which means all the arguments I've heard are really, you know, the proponent's going to talk with staff, going to come back with what they would like to do. That's going to address the concerns that we've raised and then we can move on. Is that not correct? Isn't this a referral motion?
Thank you, worship. That I think covers part of the intent. I think we have to go further though and understand what the green roof components are. Green roof components, I think are more than shrubs and are more than planting grass. I think it's more of the living roof, living roof aspect. And I think what this motion is, is to refer to staff with, discuss with the applicant as to what green roof components can be added, and then to bring that back to council. If the applicant chooses to proceed with this development permit, as was referenced, they, they may very much wish to do so, or they may simply revert to the original D P and construct in accordance with, with that. I, I think that's where we're at the moment.
Well, your worship, sure, the proponent can do a, a number of things, but I think what we're asking is for staff to talk to the proponent and come back with something that's more green. And if the picture that we last saw that showed half the, 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 the top floor, only half the roof, that's only, you know, half the concern, I suppose. So anyway, I think that the, the referral motion is correct. I hope that we'll support it. Staff are going to talk to the proponent and come back. I think that, I think we've gone as far as we can, and that's the best solution, so let's vote on that one.
Yeah, I'll call it. Hi, this is Counselor Ferguson.
Just one last, just one last thing, on the referral, of course. One last thing, here we go, we'll throw it to back to staff, as many councillors said that they could discuss it, then they'll bring it back to staff and then council again has the option to accept it or not. And then we'll have this discussion again and not enough green or not enough this and that, and it goes back again for another referral, so that's, that's the challenge we have right now. That's, at least that's my opinion.
All right, I'll call the question on referrals, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Ferguson opposed, Counselor Whitmarsh opposed, referral carries. Right, move on to E three, the banner program policy update. Now, a motion please, counsel.
Move.
Counselor Davis, secondary. Second.
Second.
Counselor Arneson, discussion, Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Mayor, just in the report, it mentions community organizations and their responsibilities in regards to the banner program. Just wanted to highlight that, that it seems to contemplate the Fort Langley Business Improvement Association doing banners, but of course, that organization is dissolving at the end of the year. So I just wanted to highlight that for staff's information, there, there would not be a Fort Langley organization unless someone else has offered to do it that I'm aware of that would have that responsibility, it's outlined in the policy.
So just a question of staff, then is the policy flexible enough as organizations, not only the Fort Langley Business Association, but other ones come and go? Is policy flexible enough to contemplate that?
Yes, thank you, your worship. The policy, in short, is flexible enough to address such a situation, your worship, in case of a community organization no longer being in, in effect or in, in place. Staff will then take it over as a municipal, I guess, objective part of the work.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. Through you, I believe, to Mr. Seppi. So in reading this new policy, so some of these are helpful to make determinations to update what the policy is, I'm just wondering, what is the, the strategy or approach for areas that are not currently covered by either a community group or a business organization for the banner program? For example, I'm thinking about the Carvath area. Do we anticipate then that there is a, you know, a, a, a strategy in place for those to be able to get on board with banners?
Mr. Seppi?
Thank you, worship. This would be based on requests that staff would then receive either from the public or as a direction from council. And depending on the, I guess, the scope of the works, it could either be accommodated within the operating budget or perhaps referred to council for consideration of additional funding.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call a question, all those in favor? And opposed?
Aye.
All in favor, carries unanimously, move on to E four, Fort Langley Cemetery mausoleum. The, the motion is here to consider a request before the design, the family of the mausoleum. And maybe I'll just ask staff if you can just make a comment. This is the first, I believe, in the township of Langley. And so, Mr. Seppi, can you just comment on this request? And how it's fit, how it's fit into our existing policies?
Thank you, your worship. As the, the report outlines, the current cemetery bylaw that we have, your worship, your worship, does not allow for mausoleums. So staff's been approached by a family who I believe, it's safe to say, do not wish to have their name necessarily public for the public record, otherwise it would have been in the, in the staff report. And nevertheless, they have accepted to cover the costs and are asking council's consideration of appropriate or necessary amendments to the bylaw that would then allow staff to proceed with their desire, their request to have a mausoleum rather than the traditional plots for interment of, of their loved ones. And they're accepting all the associated costs, including long-term operating costs.
And with mausoleums, are they a more efficient use of space? Or do they take up more space than would normally be required?
I guess it's a matter of opinion, your worship, but for the most part, they're not necessarily a more efficient use of space. I guess the, the analysis that was done by a consultant that is, I guess, an expert in the field that was hired by the township demonstrated, the study, the results of the analysis demonstrated that this is not something that is widely allowed for in the bylaws of other municipalities within the region. So that gives us an indication as to its popularity and, and the fact that it has to be considered on a, on a case-by-case basis, based on, I guess, broader objectives of a local government.
So there's no motion for, because this is the motion, or this, the report that we consider, so we have to give either a yes or a no motion. There's a few questions from council, just to clarify and, I think, we'll take a look at the motion along with the other, Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you. I, thank you very much. I was wondering, it's just because it's Halloween time, whether this has come up here today, and, but I know it's serious. I want to ask a quick question, is, we have, we're in the process of a new cemetery bylaw, if I may, through the chair?
Mr. Seppi?
The existing bylaw, your worship, was adopted in 2016. Maybe what Counselor Ferguson is referencing is a report that we're going to be providing to council with respect to expansion of the cemetery in Fort Langley.
Yeah, there, yeah, there was a report that came up, and I know it's Halloween time, so I had to say something, and yeah, it'd be interesting to see what we'll have in discussion from my colleagues. Thank you.
Counselor Davis, a question?
Hi, thank you very much. I had a couple of questions. I'm concerned, all of a sudden, is there any ties that come with this building, museum? Is there any ties to the, to the, I guess, the family that would like to put it in? Even, even though they're going to have long-term operating costs, maintenance costs, I'm just concerned that yeah, I guess, I guess that's, I don't know how to say it, any ties. I'm, I'm concerned about getting, you know, I know it's a good way to do it, but maybe, you know, if we built it and then we let people put their stuff in, now we control it, we don't have any. I know that, I know it seems like a nice gift, but I'm just concerned that we, because actually, we, like the, we talked about, we've done some, we've expanded and we can put more burials in each grave, but the very back towards the pool, that side of it is, is relatively untouched right now. And maybe that would be a good place to, to expand with numerous mausoleums. Anyhow, that, I guess, that's my biggest question I'm concerned about, even though I, I respect it's a gift and it would be a nice thing to honor your, honor everybody with, but I'm just concerned that we're, we won't be able to fill it with, fill it, I didn't mean that.
Just to, this is not a gift, it is, it is, if council directs staff to proceed and accommodate, it will be at the cost of the applicant, the, the proponent, rather.
Okay.
Accepted to cover all the costs, the capital costs and the ongoing maintenance costs in the future. It is not a gift.
Well, I mean, that's.
Now, your worship, if I could, if I could add in, I, I think it's a very good questions, this was, is, I'll, I'll take it from the top. The, I guess, the policy issue is being created by a request. We're not looking at this as being a simple one-off, where we're simply responding to the request. We're asking council if they would like us to consider that the request is effectively a catalyst to develop a policy that would include both the cost of the underlying land element and as well the ongoing maintenance. And then return that back to, to council such that they would then be able to deliberate upon the policy, and if the policy at that point was adopted, then to implement that for the requesting family that we have here. So the, the overall direction is a bit of a higher level. It's really to develop a, a, a policy framework if we want to entertain this, hence why the motion is to consider. If council wishes to authorize us to proceed on a policy basis, we'll do so, otherwise they may simply want us to may simply want to receive this, this report and then move on.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Aye, yes, thank you, worship. I found this very interesting, and I know specifically, I, I think further to Mr. Becken's comment that we could receive this, but since we don't have this as an option in our current policy, that would be the most prudent thing to do, because it occurs to me that having it as a one-off opportunity sets a precedent for our, our different cemeteries. And so I, I did have some questions to staff, it may have been in the report and I missed it, but just the design guidelines for mausoleums, would that be something that, that we could control? I know that there's a footprint that they would be allowed if they have current plots in the cemetery, but what about the, how it looks exactly and how it would fit into the rest of the cemetery aesthetics there?
Thank you, your worship. The answer, the quick answer is yes, there will be some consideration and, and discretion for staff to develop site-specific criteria to ensure that the, the look of the mausoleum fits the heritage character of, of the area.
Thank you, Mr. Seppi. That's good to know, because in particular, I know from the past as other councillors well, that there's been a bit of an issue around changing elements of our heritage Fort Langley Cemetery in particular, and I wouldn't want to endorse anything that would, you know, create any upset, because having lived in Ontario for some time, they're fairly common there, and it seems to me that it might be something that unless you strictly limit it as to size, and I know it's currently going to have a particular footprint, but just the way that it fits in might, might be an issue, and, you know, what does that look like if you set a precedent with the rest of the landscaping and the design looking one way, and then suddenly approving based on who owns which plots now? The ability to have a mausoleum without having integrated that whole thing in the first place, so those are just my comments. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Seppi?
What I was saying earlier, I guess, also, the, the fact that it will be referred to the Heritage Advisory Committee for their consideration, if holistically approved by council in terms of a design, it might give council another level of comfort that it will be reviewed by the Heritage Advisory Committee, given the context of the Fort Langley area.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I have some major reservations around this, because it's a new precedent. It's in a public cemetery. We don't know what the sighting's going to be. We don't even know how much space is left in, in that cemetery for buildings of this nature. I also think that it's probably better located in the new cemetery area that we approved not that long ago. So I think we should be getting a presentation on this before we vote. And because I think we should get more information on this, I think we should probably defer this for a, a presentation at the next meeting. And I'd be willing to make that motion.
I'd be willing to second it.
Now, I'll just go on to Counselor Long first and, okay, sort of get some questions out of staff, it's very needed. Counselor Long?
Thanks, your worship, and I'm not sure whether I would support that, but I am, I'm concerned as the rest of us are, but I just want to be clear, on the report, it says, first of all, they, they, they have eight unoccupied lots, so is there a limit on how much of, how many lots a family can, can purchase? Because that's a fairly sizable piece of real estate, which I guess will accommodate this, this mausoleum.
Thank you, your worship. The, the bylaw currently does not, does provide a limitation, a, a limit, but I guess historically, there was not a restriction, so this goes back many years prior to the current restrictions being in place.
Okay, well, that being the case, then the chances of, of future mausoleums being proposed is a little bit less than this one, because you're going to have to have a certain amount of space to, to to construct it, is that not correct?
That is correct, your worship, yes.
Okay, so this would be because of they were grandfathered to some extent with that, the eight lots that they have the right of interment to. Their building or the, or the structure will not exceed that area, so we're not losing any ground. Would you be able to intern more than eight people in this mausoleum after it's been built?
It could be, I guess, your worship, depending on the size, but currently, that is the plan to proceed with just the eight. Based on the costs, as I said, of not just the initial installation, but also the ongoing maintenance. So the plan right now, as it stands up with the council approval, is not to accommodate any more than what's being asked for.
Okay, well, based on that, I, I, I think we should allow it to proceed, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, so, great discussion, good questions. So right now, we could receive, there's a couple of options. One could be to receive this report and refer to staff to just give us a presentation or like a policy, policy list, or we could just approve or forward this onto staff and then again ask for staff presentation, there's going to be a policy change, so, I'll leave it up to council, Counselor Richter, do you have a motion? You're in, you're in muted.
Okay, yes, I like that motion, Mr. Mayor, to receive it and to ask for a staff presentation. I also think that council should be getting an update on the Fort Langley Cemetery in terms of its space requirements, as well as the fact that I've been advised, because I do have burial plots myself there, that bones have been shifting around. So I think council needs to be aware of that issue.
Halloween.
No, it's not Halloween, Steve. It means that you can't put caskets in the ground anymore.
So, so you're making a motion to receive and refer to staff, it doesn't, doesn't preclude this from coming back, but we'll get more information. We'll look at this again. So the motion is to receive the report, refer to staff, come back to the presentation regarding mausoleums in the township of Langley.
Mausoleums and also Fort Langley issues, Fort Langley Cemetery issues.
Secondary? Counselor Davis, second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? Seeing that, I'm going to call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here's unanimously, thank you. Move on to tree protection bylaw, one year review, and the report has been attached. So this is a motion to receive the review.
Move or take, Ferguson?
And also, there's more of the motion here, and that council refers to services and has requests related to the 2021 budget deliberation process, so. It's received and then to refer that to the budget, so that's been moved by Counselor Ferguson, and a secondary. Councilor Arneson, especially, Councilor Richter.
I think it's not appropriate for us to receive this until the tree protection advisory committee has seen it and reviewed it. And made a recommendation to us about it. So we're by us taking this now, I think we're undercutting that committee and I don't think that's right, so I won't be supporting it.
That's Arneson. You're muted, you're muted.
Attention, uh, thank you, worship. Um, I I see Counselor Richter's point about the fact that this is, although it's an annual review that was requested. It is preceding the fact that the T P A C will not be able to look at this and come up with an endorsement or other suggestions. So the timeliness is definitely a challenge, but I wouldn't know then what timeline would be necessary. Because if the task force hasn't met yet, I'm not sure how long it will take for them to do the review of the tree by law. So I'm I've been at a loss for this one, I would like to put the staff implications at least forward for the budget process. Maybe it could be structured in such a way that that element could go forward. And we could also receive other information from the task force in a timely manner as a potential. Hybrid situation, thank you.
Yeah, actually, it it doesn't make good sense to send this to the the commit- the new tree committee. But you know what, it because of the budget, um, I think we should send it to them anyhow, like, but but it's gotta go to budget. I I believe I want to send it to budget, but. It makes sense to have them have a look at it.
To be clear, the motion does, um. We're receiving, just just to be quick, excuse me, um, the motion is to receive it and also to refer to key protection advice committee. So that's built into it, but as a council, we can certainly receive the report, but it doesn't end with us receiving it, it is being referred. And I think I think it is common, it turns out very, I consider Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, I I I understand the the point that's being made about the referring this. But I think the statement here is that we're receiving it, doesn't mean we've accepted it, doesn't mean we agree with all the ideas in it. It just means we received the report and we've decided to refer it to that task force, which is where it should go. So I think that, actually, it's doing, excuse me, it's doing what Counselor Richter is suggesting, is that we should send it straight there. We're not making comments or not, um, and there are some things there that ties in with the budgeting process. And I'm sure we'll be able to get feedback from the, uh, from the T P A C as we move along, uh, as we move along towards the budget process. We know the budget process is something that lasts a few months, um, we're into often March and into April before we start finalizing the budget. So I think there'll be plenty of opportunity to hear back from T P A C about those two items. But I do think this should go to the task force and they can start working on it.
One. For Mississippi, I see your hands up, you wish to come and second. That's long.
Me?
Mississippi person.
All I wanted to say, your worship, was this is, I think, Counselor Arneson also referenced this. This is in fact responding directly to a council direction to evaluate the progress of the bylaw that council adopted over a year ago. And provide council with information, so this is, this is, uh, expressly reporting the findings of staff. It is in fact, uh, factual in in nature in that these are the findings. Uh, so with the findings include the fact that, given the staff resources. It is unlikely that we would be able to provide the same level of service. Uh, and as such, requesting council to allow staff to include for discussions in the 2021 budget consideration of. Our additional staff resources and refer the actual report to the committee. So it's not actually, uh, I guess contrary to council direction is providing council with the information that council asked for.
Counselor Long.
Yeah, so I mean, the first words in the in the recommendation is to refer to the. P A C, what do you want to, the T, the T P A C, so, uh, um, I appreciate the discussion, but to me, that's what I'm voting on. And it's going to go there for the next steps and that's where it belongs, so that's great, isn't it?
Richter.
Is it my turn, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Richter.
Okay. Um, I think it should go to the committee before it comes to council. And that's why I think maybe what we should do is, uh. Divide this motion, we can move the budget request forward as a placeholder in case the committee decides we need more staff on the tree by law. I don't know, they have to review stuff and the first part of it, I think we just hold off until. Um, it well, I just refer the whole first one to to the T P A C. And not receive it until they've seen it.
Seen it already, so all we do is receive it, so. Anyways, um, I'm quite content to have this divided, uh, the first paragraph and second paragraph, the council is amenable to that.
Okay, well, let's divide it then.
Is there a secondary division, Tom Arneson, show hands, all those favorite division? Opposed, okay, so we like to concert, Arneson.
Um, thank you, worship, just oh, just in support of the fact that, um, to divide it means that we, I think, are being rational. About the fact that, as Mr. Seffy has pointed out, now this is evidence based. We've now had a year to find out what the result is on staff and and other things based on the new bylaw. But at the same time, I wouldn't want to presume that we are effectively by approaching it in combination. That we are depriving the new committee of any opportunity to advance things towards the budget, which I think would be viable. But so the baseline is if there is some, uh, new resources that we need, that's one thing. But there could be a lot of feedback that we're going to get within the budget timeframe. So I'm I'm persuaded that it's valuable to divide it and, um, make sure that both of those objectives will be reached. Thank you.
That's a lot.
Worship, I don't understand where we are with this, uh, I I guess I do understand, but I don't agree with it. You can't refer something to an advisory committee unless council has received it first. You have, if council is referring it, so if if it didn't come here and went straight to them, I don't think it's an official referral from council. We we want to empower this committee, so we're referring it to them, it's in the first paragraph. Am I the only one, we maybe I have a different version than everybody else. It's it simply says that we're going to receive it and review and send it right away to the to the committee. So, uh, I'm going to be supporting both, I guess you divided it, I'll I'll support them both and it should go to the committee after it's come to council, which is what it's doing.
Thank you, and yeah, so just to be clear, we're just receiving it and and, uh. The the committee will review, make recommendations, uh, back to council, committee will not make recommendations to the budget, they'll make it back to council. So that's generally how we use our vice, so I'm going to call the question on the first paragraph, all those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
That's right, opposed, carries second paragraph, all those in favor?
Favor.
Oh, opposed.
Opposed.
Council Richter, opposed, carry, thank you. Move on, I'm gonna take a five minute recess, we've over two hours since, uh, you know, let's say five minutes, a little bit over five minutes, we'll go to three thirty. Okay, thank you. All right, welcome back, we convene the, uh, the meeting and, uh, we want to E six, uh, Councilor, so you give me a hand up.
Uh, yes, uh, I just wanted to move, uh, E six.
Okay, uh, part of that is going to ask staff, we're going to have a bit of an update, and so we just hold off on the motion, uh, Mr. Backen. Mr. Stare are going to give us an update, uh, and said this was referred from the last meeting, there's been some, um, new developments, so Mr. Backen.
Uh, thank you, your worship, Mr. Stare is online and he can put the previous table up, but I'm not going to focus on the table at this time. Your statement is completely correct, this is a referral from the last meeting of council. So council would have some time to deliberate upon, uh, uh, future steps and add some additional information that's compared in the report. Um, the the suggestion in the report is a bit of a compilation that we could, um, uh, you know, receive the report. But as well, consider further steps, uh, uh, after or concurrent with the budget process. Um, the additional challenges that we face is that the terrain continues to move and is ever changing. Uh, since the work began on this update, uh, we've had some additional information as to the size of cohorts, if you will. That may be allowed in a facility at one time, however, there's complications added. Because while there may be multiple cohorts, that is groups of fifty, there's extensive cleaning and division responsibilities to make sure that no cohort crosses over. Uh, with another, uh, which taken to the extreme can mean that a parent could not even take their child to a sports event. Because that would be a crossing over of the cohort if they're in the wrong side. It just emphasizes some of the work that still needs to be done. But in addition to that, we've actually had some further developments as well, and this just comes from today. Um, our concern all along has been that there may be, uh, potential tightening for some future, uh, regulations coming forth. And we understand that Dr. Henry did not provide her update today and in fact is providing it tomorrow. We understand that there may be some additional restrictions that come into play, and that's based on some of the stats we're now seeing over the weekend. We understand from Friday to Saturday, there were three hundred and seventeen new cases, from Saturday to Sunday, two hundred and ninety three new cases. And from Sunday to Monday, two hundred and seven new cases for a total of eight hundred and seventeen new cases over three days. Um, uh, some of those are record numbers, but certainly it's a three day record we have going forward. Uh, we understand that the province is contemplating, or sorry, the health authority is contemplating some additional restrictions and we don't know what those are. So either a referral for a few more weeks or a referral to the budget process would likely be in order as this matter continues to be very complicated. Very frustrating, but also taking some time to actually sort out as we're getting information, literally as, uh, as we speak, uh, in terms of some of the processes underway.
Your worship, I've moved and referral to the budget process.
He's up, um.
The point of order.
Sorry, I, um, just wanted to clarify a little bit, so basically, Mr. Backen is saying that there are, uh, further developments. We don't know where this is going to go and the recommendation from staff is at this point, again, to defer this to to the next meeting and also to the budget process, we'll have more information. So, Mr. Backen, the preferred motion would be a broke to the budget or be the referral to the next meeting and to the budget.
It's really for the comfort of council, um, in terms of the the whole matter can be put over to the next meeting. Or we can simply go to the budget process, which is going to be in the month of November, we're beginning in the month of November. So that may put us more like three to four weeks away as opposed to two weeks till the next meeting.
So perhaps, uh, with these developments, uh, just referral to the next meeting where we have a chance, uh, in a shorter period of time to reevaluate. It could be in order, but I'll leave that to council, Councilor Richter, I know you had your hand up, so, and you want to make a motion, I'll turn it over.
Yeah, well, I'm assuming that Counselor Ferguson has moved the recommendation, which I wanted to do, but that's okay, I'll second it. Um, yes, and Dr. Henry is doing her, uh, presentation right now. And, um, she is essentially looking at banning gatherings except for immediate family and the safe six. And she's appealing to community leaders, she said this, I'm appealing to the community leaders out there. Uh, to ask citizens to be more diligent in keeping the community safe. Over fifty percent of the cases are in the Fraser Valley. So we're in a high growth area for infections. So I I think we should be erring on the side of caution here. And I certainly think we should be, uh, waiting to get more direction from Dr. Henry because I suspect it will be coming very shortly.
So the motion would be that, uh, as is here in recommendation, so it does take it to the budget, so it gives us more time, so. And that motion was moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Richter, and discussion on a council law.
Yeah, point of order, I think we're 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 going down an interesting road here because the motion was already made at the last meeting. To amend it to open Walnut Grove rather than W C Blair. That motion.
Okay, I'll, excuse me, I'll get clarification from the clerk.
To the motion, that's not a point of order. It is a point of order because.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I'm accepting it as a point of order, I want clarification.
Let me, can I, can I please finish?
Let me, uh, get clarification first on the motion.
So the most.
Excuse me, Council, Council long, excuse me, I'm asking the clerk.
But I haven't finished explaining.
No, but I want to ask the clerk, I have a question to clerk on clarification, you did raise a point of order, so I am getting some clarification. Was this motion was moved, was it amended, I always see it was in front of it, so Ms. Vowers just can clarify that, thank you.
Well, I hadn't finished, your worship, explained.
I'll get back to you, I'll get back to you. Thank you, so the motion of October fifth was deferred to this meeting, this motion is focused to, uh, basically takes a further, from what I understand, uh, so Council long, go ahead.
Okay, let's be clear on that, so the motion was, this motion and amendment be deferred until staff have a provided a cost analysis of reopening Walnut Grove Pool. Instead of W C Blair, and it's to be deferred to this meeting, so is this motion not now live on the floor? And it therefore, as a point of order, this would be further referred, I guess, is the motion that will maybe entertain now.
That's correct, that's correct, it's being further referred.
It's being further referred to the next meeting, is that what I've heard?
Ms. Vowers.
And that's because we're expecting to hear from Dr. Henry today?
I believe the, uh, motion was to defer it to the budget process, but it could be corrected.
That was correct.
So this motion, in the motion, it says it goes to the budget process, so this needs to be heard to the budget process.
Well, I I can't agree with that, uh, put me on the speakers list and I can certainly speak for that, am I on it now?
Your honor.
Okay, well, no, we're not going to do that because that that's contrary to what the last motion was. We understand that there are budget, uh, considerations and those numbers were spelled out for us. Uh, deferring it to the budget means it's not going to happen for quite a long time and this is almost going to open last month. And then the deferral was to go till today's meeting because we thought we'd be better to, or many of us thought that we'd be better open to. To open Walnut Grove rather than Blair right away, so that was simply all that was happening. Had the motion passed at the last meeting, Blair technically would be open already. So I can't see deferring, we know it's going to be costly and the and the numbers have been presented. But, uh, I I I don't see this motion actually as an order because we should be, we should be debating the motion that should be on the floor now. Which was the one that was deferred from last meeting. which was the one that was deferred from last meeting, and perhaps that's what we're doing. But if we're going to defer it to the budget, it doesn't make sense to me. That's just punting it down the road, am I right?
It is a referral. So Counselor Davis?
You know, I would wonder if erring on the side of caution, err on the side of caution. I think we should wait for Henry, Dr. Henry, and we don't want to get anybody, we don't want to get anybody. It's just, it's too, it's, it's a health issue. Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson?
I think that's so true. I mean, what we've heard today, this is brand-new breaking news that many of us got just as we had a little break here then between 3:15 and 3:30. I think it is time to reflect. The whole province is affected on this. It's not only township, so those people that are opened already may have to make other changes to what they're doing. I don't know, but I think erring on the side of caution, as Counselor Davis has so eloquently said, that's the best thing to do.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yes, so I just trying to make sure I understand. The referral is to refer it to the budget process. We know that the budget process and making final decisions on the budget happens in March or April. So it feels to me like this is a deferral for four or five months, you know? Maybe a misunderstanding because if it was a, if it was a deferral until the next meeting when we've had the information from Dr. Bonnie Henry and we're able to then, staff is able to work through what that actually means and how that works and what, you know, that's different than the budget process. I think we always knew there was going to be an expense to it, particularly for 2020 and the cost for 2020, and we were talking about opening it in possibly 2020. Now, if it has to be delayed for health reasons, I'm fully supportive of delaying it for health reasons, but it feels like we don't have all the information, and to say that we're going to punt it down the road for four or five months, and then we'll talk about it again, or we'll finalize our decisions again, seems a long time. And just maybe help me if I'm fully understanding that what we're talking about is not making a decision on facilities until March or April. Is that what we're actually talking about in this?
Mr. Backen, clarify. Mr. Backen?
Thank you, your worship. It bears repeating because that's not the intention. The suggestion is that we anticipate the budget process beginning in the month of November. There was some discussion about going to the next meeting, which is November the 9th. The budget process, we're thinking is going to be, oh, likely within the two-week periods after that. So the suggestion is effectively rather than a two-week deferral, most likely about a four-week deferral before this comes back, before council for further consideration. The reason for that timeline is trying to ascertain two things. That is, to analyze or understand any public health orders that have been historically issued because there's a great deal of confusion with some of those in terms of what it actually means. For example, if the cohorts, groups of 50, are to be completely independent, the illustration we used was that it's technically not feasible for parents to take their children to the event because then they'd be crossing over the cohort with the players versus the parents. We don't believe that to be the case. We think that's an example requiring further, I guess, clarification. But the additional news is then as of today, and again, it's a developing situation, is that given the number of cases over 800 over the weekend, it looks like there may be a further tightening of some of these orders that may, say, reduce the size of gatherings or eliminate some of the size of gatherings, and that will become very apparent in the short term. And then it'll be the interpretation of what those gatherings can actually look like. So the timeframe is a little bit longer. It's really up to council in terms of when they want to get further updates on this, but it looks like we're going to be experiencing some level of tightening because of the cases. And we understood Dr. Henry would be making further announcements tomorrow, but it does sound like she might be doing them as we speak, which is going to, even with that, take some time for clarification of whatever the rulings tend to be.
Okay, so is, what, like, I'm fine with referring to the budget process, but my experience on the budget process is we start in November and December, but we don't make decisions on our budget and approve the budget until we get closer to March. And so if that's the case, that seems awfully long. So I'm wondering if, you know, certainly happy to defer this to the budget process, but it feels like we would have to have another motion that we would get, maybe, maybe we need to have an update on this topic every meeting as we move along. Every meeting, we have at least an update from staff on what's the update and what we know, new information as we go along, so that we can get to the point where we make final decisions. But final budget decisions, in my experience, has been March, even into April. So I'm concerned with, I'm not sure what this means. I understand we're discussing it and maybe discussing it in November, but are we approving a budget in the end of November? I don't think that was...
Thank you, your worship. I guess it bears repeating. The referral in the recommendation is not to, to the conclusion of the budget process, but to be considered as part of the budget process. Council therefore can determine at what part of the budget process they wish to further, I guess, advance the matter because a part of it is monetary, but of course, the other part that we're all very concerned about is the public health concerns. So as such, the council would be getting updates as we regularly can provide, even through staff or through Dr. Henry's orders that are being made public, and then the matter can be processed. But the timing will be dependent upon firstly, the information we're receiving, and secondly, council's direction given that information that I would say is probably going to be more in the nature of weekly, just as we get updates, but maybe not so formalized as to be an agenda at that point because we'll have to be updating us as we go along. But I think what we're sensing is it'll become self-evident once we even understand the orders that are being made today and tomorrow.
Thank you.
Counselor Richter?
Sorry, yes, I just sent a CTV news bulletin to each counselor, and the new health order that's come down today limits the number of guests allowed at private homes to no more than six. I think this is probably going to be the first of a chain of them, so I don't know how our facilities are going to be impacted by this, but I suspect that it will be coming. I like Counselor Whitmarsh's suggestion that maybe what we want to do is have a COVID update at each meeting, and if it appears that things ease off and we can look at reopening an indoor pool, then we could make that decision before the budget is finalized. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I guess I'm struggling with the fact that there is a lot of merit in taking a cautious approach, and so I certainly wouldn't want to push our, myself or our other colleagues to look at doing something that was inappropriate under the circumstances. I guess my biggest challenge is that we haven't decided basically anything along the lines, and maybe I'm misinterpreting the facts of this. However, it seems to me further to what Counselor Long was referring to is that we were at the last meeting trying to make a determination as to which facility we're going to open, and I don't understand why we couldn't even in principle decide that. Irrespective of whatever new health measures are going to come down and be enforced, that's fine. However, to me, it doesn't address the issue that was the substantive discussion that we've been having. So it started to me with the ACUCC in the summer, which we opened. Now we're in a different season with different opportunities, and just to delay for the purpose of putting it to the budget, it doesn't seem to really address the fundamental issue to me, which is in the event that the health orders are supportive of allowing us to be able to open up a rec facility, which one would it be? So in this sense, I do feel frustrated that we have not even made that determination, and I was hoping that we could do that today, and therefore, I'm not going to support this going forward to the budget process. I think we already know what the budget numbers are, more or less, but I don't think we've done enough due diligence about that, and especially as we haven't determined which one in the event that it's safe to do so should be opened. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Thanks, your worship. Obviously, this motion is, it's kind of, to punt the issue away, it must be. I mean, usually, things that defer to the budget when you don't want to talk about them. And so I'm not supportive at all of that. I think that we have to make a decision, as has been said by other counselors. And certainly, we are under the jurisdiction of the public health officer, so if the rules change tomorrow or by the end of this meeting, we will be doing what we're told to be done. We'll be abiding by those rules. So we need to make a decision based on the finances that we've been given to open up a pool, and it was going to be either Blair or Walnut Grove, and I would like to see us open Walnut Grove. And if Dr. Henry sends down some new directives, of course, we're going to follow them, so it goes without saying. So I think we need to proceed on that basis. I don't think that this motion to defer to the budget is going to get us any closer to that. I suppose the real question to all of you counselors and these worship is, do we want to open a pool or don't we? I don't want to make too many comments about health because, you know, I'm not an expert, but I haven't heard of any cases in swimming pools. In fact, I heard Dr. Henry saying that the swimming was, you know, not a bad thing, and that the virus could not be transmitted through pool water. So many pools are already open. I think we should bite the bullet, open up Walnut Grove, and certainly, whatever Dr. Henry tells us to do, we will do immediately. So I guess I won't be supporting this and hope that we can get the other motion back on the floor. Let me ask that, your worship, then. If this goes down, then we're back to the original motion, which is the one that was deferred from last meeting. Is that correct?
The motion's on the floor. As I understand it, the motion that we see in front of us, and so that's on the floor at this point. Somebody wanted to refer that to the next meeting, that still would be focused, right, Ms. Varr? So, so this motion that, as you see it, is what's on the floor. If you wish to make a motion to get more information, come back in two weeks, I've heard. Just make a referral motion or deferral motion to take this to the next meeting. Still, still there.
Can I, oh, sorry. I need to go. I'm sorry. I need to touch my little...
Counselor Ferguson next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think that, I'm not sure, whatever you want to rule on, we have to, we'll be getting this back. We're getting more information from Fraser Health. I appreciate that I have gone over the email from Counselor Richter. Thank you for, Counselor Richter, for sending that. You know, for those of us that spend a lot of time, Mr. Mayor, on the budget process and going over the documents and working with staff, asking questions of staff, and determining what the, I guess, the tax rate will be for that, that I don't think that's punting. I don't devaluate the amount of time and energy that staff put in and how important the budget process is. So I don't think punting things to the budget is a way of getting rid of it. I think that we spend, and awful, those of us that spend a lot of our time on the budget, we should indeed take that into consideration. But whatever you want to do as far as getting more information, I don't know if, I have a quick question to staff. Was a decision made whether we're going to go with Blair or with Walnut Grove if I may, Mr. Chair?
Sorry, Mr. Backen, sorry. No.
Okay, so I, that's what I mean. I would suggest that the most prudent thing, if we were to make a decision, is go ahead as suggested by staff again with WC Blair, but anyway, we'll see what happens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Davis?
You know, I would, the options for additional reopening, those are options. They're going to change. If she didn't speak today and she, and she put out 800 and some odd, which, thank you, Counselor Richter, 800 anyhow, and tomorrow, there's going to be tightening. I would make that referral to next meeting. I don't think that, I know that there's going to be people that are going to be upset that the rec pool isn't open, but it's, it's not just, you can't catch it in the water, you know, you've got to... And I know you can't use the change rooms, and, but what are we talking about here? This is a pandemic. This is, I don't, you know, I just, I would, let's just defer this till two more weeks. It'll buy us, we'll hear what her recommendations are. Like, I'm even, I'm, and then Counselor Ferguson said, this isn't just the town trip by Langley. This is B.C., so let's, you know, we're in the Fraser Valley here. It's, you know, we, I'm stuck on the farm here. I don't, I don't be around a lot of people. It's, I know, I'm sorry, but I, I can keep my distance fairly easy in amongst my cows. And so, erring on the side of caution, can I...
Mr. Backen has a comment.
No, your worship, it was simply that the motion on the floor is referencing the budget process. It would require an amendment if we're to change it. Again, though, I think we're getting a little bit caught up in the details. We'd like to see things move as quickly as we possibly can for those who have referenced. Implications are change facilities, on benches, gatherings, all those things are to be determined. So it's, it's up to council, but the deferral is simply, as it now stands, to the budget process, which would be effectively three to four weeks.
Okay, so if we defer this, it could change anyhow. So let, okay, defer it. Let's just defer it. There's a good chance it's going to change, and staff isn't going to let, staff will take this, and if it changes and these numbers come in a little different, we'll get notified right away. Okay, you know what? That's a statement. That wasn't really a question. I know they will. So, okay, let's, let's put this in for the budget, and let's hang tough, and, you know, we're, we'll be making some changes if this is getting worse and worse. Thank you.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Mayor. I just want to confirm. So I view this as two separate issues. I can't believe I'm sort of on the verge of agreeing with Counselor Long on an issue. I mean, I think I would like to start to see, you know, people have the option to go to one of our rec facilities. So I think during, what I remember during the staff report was, or the presentation, was that WC Blair was chosen for his therapeutic programs for seniors and other groups that are using those for physiotherapy, exercise, and other sorts of health items, and I've always been concerned that with COVID, we're potentially, you know, removing other aspects that people need to maintain their health to ensure that they're 100% protected from getting COVID. And I'd like to start heading in the direction where maybe people have that option and the choice to go to the facility if they, if they want to, or they need that kind of facility for their health, and if they're, they feel that COVID is a major risk to them and their family members, that they simply don't use the facility. But the question for staff, Mr. Backen, as I had, is, of course, that doesn't apply to staff who are, you know, who sign up to have a job and they're required to go to work. So how do we ensure, or I'm assuming that part of this ramp-up program for at least one pool, you know, has staff members that are willing to return to work, and there's protocols in place for them to safely work? And I just wanted to get, just get that clarified again for council before we finalize this.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Stare, I think you're out there. Perhaps you could discuss the protocols for an opening in, you know, both the training, the timeframes, and the cleaning that is necessary. It might provide some level of comfort, Mr. Stare.
Yes, so thank you for the question. Definitely, all the learnings we've had from opening Alder Grove Pool and the arenas as well have really helped us with any protocols we're going to move forward with for either facility. And so whether it's enhanced cleaning, the physical distancing, just making sure there's space in the offices, appropriate spaces, and then just also how people come through the building and making sure that there's low-touch points as possible and limiting, you know, the usage of smaller spaces. So definitely the same protocols that we'd be carrying forward to whatever facility is chosen to be open.
Okay, so that's helpful. I mean, you know, I just wanted, just to add again that, for me, I definitely struggle with this with the rising case counts. But I also, you know, have a certain degree of significant sympathy for people that are dependent upon pool facilities to maintain their health, especially in their senior year. So I, you know, I really don't want to be continuing to postpone this. I mean, I can go to a, I can go to a restaurant. I can go to Starbucks, but for some reason, I can't go to the pool. So I mean, I sympathize with the desire and the concern about the rising case counts, the B.C. state of emergency, additional health orders that may come down the pipe, but I'm also, don't want to continually defer this. I think, you know, from part of my point of view, is we need to, we need to find a way in the new normal to get on with it and not continually postpone this. I thought that there was a reasonable balance with, with, you know, opening up the WC Blair Pool that was supposed specific to health programs. I also have one more question, Mr. Backen, Mr. Mayor. Was there any consideration by staff given to potentially raising the user fees slightly given the... to potentially, uh, raising the user fees slightly, given the anticipated lower usage to offset some of this, this expense?
Your worship, that's something that's under consideration, but would require a change to our rates and fees by lots. Ultimately, we can do some things in the interim, but, uh, that is something that we'd probably implement more in the next year once we had a better sense of our usage rates and increased cleaning costs. And as well, the, the potential staggering of times. One of the big challenges we face is that there seems to be some confusion as to, uh, the gap that must be between the one cohort using a facility and the other. Uh, at one point it was up to one hour uh, between those. And now it seems to be, uh, being reduced somewhat, but there's a, a lot of uncertainty that we think will become more, uh, defined as we go forward, uh, as to the rates and charges and then some of the process we have to put in place.
So, you know, maybe that's something that, that, you know, like we can be a little more proactive on and, and keeping updated with, uh, with Mr. Backen and, and Mr. Stare, but regarding that maybe we can, we can look at offsetting some of this cost that if you are going to be using this facility, during, uh, during this time, that, that maybe we have to look at some incremental increase in user fees, given the, the fact that there are just fewer people at the pool. It might be a much more pleasurable experience. Might be getting a lot more value for it. Um, when, you know, maybe when it's more busy in, in a normal, a normal course of time. So I, I really am sort of along the line that we need to maybe at least look at one and not continually defer this. You know, again, to the budget as other counselors have mentioned. So I'd prefer to start making decisions around timelines and facilities with these cost implications that are right in front of us rather than just continually deferring. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Ferguson, your hand is up and spoken twice. Are you looking to make an amendment or a referral, a referral motion?
No, I, I should put my hand down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. And Counselor Whitmarsh.
I, I, I like the idea of, um, you know, moving this to the, uh, to the budget process. I like the idea of having regular updates and certainly we'll follow along with what the provincial guidelines are. But I think, I think it is important that we make a decision soon about which facility we would prefer to open and the timelines that we would like to move along in. And we certainly adjust those based on provincial guidelines, but to keep deferring it and, and leaving it open, I think, isn't helpful. I don't think it sends good message to the public. I think we should make a decision. And of course, we'll follow the provincial guidelines. If we have to slow it down, we have to open it up later, we can do that. But I think that the discussion around whether it's Walnut Grove or WC Blair is a good discussion. I think we should make that decision. It would be helpful to make that today.
All right. I see no further discussions on the motion that's in front of us. I'm called a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? If you could just mention your name if you're opposed, I don't see everyone. Uh, Counselor Woodward, you opposed? Anybody else? Counselor Davis opposed? Anybody else? I don't see all the hands. So that's why I asked. Okay, so I've got two. Oh, Counselor Long?
Yeah, and Arneson.
Arneson too, yeah.
Okay, so it's, that's four opposed. So the motion is defeated on tie vote. And so we can move on.
Your worship, then we're back to the original motion, are we? That, which is the one that was deferred.
This is, that was defeated.
No, it wasn't. You see, this, this is what we got off track here. What we should have done, in my opinion, is immediately discuss the motion that was deferred from the last meeting, which was to open up Walnut Grove. And, uh, somehow we got onto this other track with, uh, more deferrals.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Backen, Mr. Backen.
Motion should be on the floor right now.
In my, I'm just taking a quick read of the last agenda or the last minutes, pardon me. Um, and at this point, the motion would be consideration of further steps in the reopening plan, including reopening of swimming pools be deferred until considered as part of the 2021 budget, which was referred. Details developed. What?
No, that's not the motion.
Well, there were several motions that were divided. I'm just trying to pick out the right one. Okay, so the, the active motion would be that it was the motion be amended to reopen the Walnut Grove Recreation Center Pool, including the target op, opening date of November 2020 with a budget approval expense of $240,000 in 2020 and the pre, pre-approved budget increase of 1.1 million for 2021. So the motion would be to open Walnut Grove at this time.
Right. So that motion is on the floor, your worship. I call a question on that.
So Miss Power is on, is that what I saw is on the front of us. So there's a motion that's on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, we didn't, we didn't hear that. Sorry.
So I'm just chatting with, uh, with her. So apparently this motion that we're debating wasn't placed in the agenda in error. And so Miss Power has just clarified that. So this is agenda. And I wasn't aware of that. I was at that meeting, so I wasn't aware of that. So so as I understand, Miss Power, please, there's a, there's a live motion on the floor, is that right? On the previous meeting?
Yes, the deferred motion. The deferred motion is that the motion be amended to reopen the Walnut Grove Recreation Center Swimming Pool, including the target opening date of the, of November 2020 with an approved additional expense of $240,000 in 2020 and a pre-approved budget increase of 1.1 million. The original motion was to open WC Blair. And then that was amended to open Walnut Grove instead.
So, Ms. Bauer, so I think where we're at, we have then the amended, what is the amendment to open Walnut Grove carried? Or is that's been what's on the floor? In which case we'll have the amendment, then the original motion, just so we have the right process here.
It was the amendment that was deferred. So we need to vote on the amendment first, which would be for Walnut Grove. And then that would change the main motion, which we would then vote on the main motion.
So what we have on the floor is the amendment to the main motion to change it to Walnut Grove from WC Blair.
That's, that's correct, your worship. You, you were not here. So the main motion was to open Blair with the associated costs. There was an amendment to open Walnut Grove. At that point, the entire matter was deferred for additional information from staff. That report went forth to council. The recommendations of that report were defeated on a tie vote. So now, as Ms. Bauer points out, we return to the amended motion, or sorry, the amendment of the original motion. If that carries, uh, or is defeated, we then return to the original motion. And then we can have disposition of the issue itself.
Okay, so not knowing what the speaker's list was at the time, we'll start all over again. So we're on the amendment. The amendment is to open Walnut Grove in place of, uh, WC Blair. So we'll start the speaker's list on the amendment and our Counselor Long.
Thanks, your worship. So we, we discussed the, the geographic, uh, location of Walnut Grove over, uh, Blair and the amount of population that's in that area. And there was some discussion about the therapeutic aspect of Blair versus Walnut Grove, but my understanding since that meeting, and we did defer it to this meeting to get more information, was that there are still, uh, many therapeutic opportunities for people at Walnut Grove as well and, and many other opportunities for them. The cost is, uh, unfortunately, we don't have the two costs compared here, but it wasn't like double to open uh, Walnut Grove over Blair. It was a little bit more and that, and those numbers are mentioned here in the motion. So uh, I, I don't know if, West of council that received, um, uh, you know, communications as I have, but it just makes, it just makes sense to open up a Walnut Grove. And, and listen, all of this is going to be subject to Dr. Henry. So please, let's proceed with the best knowledge we have today. And certainly, we know that if any changes in any health regulations down the line, we, we'll be affected and we'll abide by them. But this is for the health of our community. And, uh, I think that we need to get another recreation center open. It is a fair amount of money, but that's, that's all part of COVID, isn't it? And so I hope that council will support this and we can move forward.
Thank you, your worship. Now, we, we staff certainly understand and agree with the desire to move this forward. Our challenge is simply the moving target. And why I wanted to interject was, uh, it looks like, again, this is happening as we're meeting. The limitation for groups may have been reduced, may have been reduced, we're not certain, from 50 to six. Um, so I only say that because whatever council decision is made here, it looks like we would then engage in a reopening, but we'd be on the lesser number. And that will have cost implication. So totally happy to do so, but there's, uh, one option is that we may be looking at significantly higher expenses because we'd be opening facilities, uh, for cohorts of six. We simply don't know at this point. Just want to make sure the council's informed as best we can of the information that is ever changing, current of, of world events.
So your worship, I, I understand what the administrator is saying. And certainly, as I, as I mentioned in my comments, whatever rules come down will apply. So we're not going to be opening anything for six people. So, um, you know, I think we should proceed and staff will, will, will let us know right away if there's been an issue or if, if the orders have changed from the progress.
This motion as it stands would be that we would be opening for six people because council would be, uh, authorizing opening. And so if the order comes down, it comes after me for contrary motion to stop it. So at this point, if this goes through, we are open. It could be amended to that under the current numbers of 50. But if it's less than that, then, then we'll have to come back to council.
Okay, I'd like that. When you're ready, let's put that in because that might be important. I, I would say happy to put that in. Thank you.
Okay. So just to be clear to staff, thank you. We'll, we'll hold that up. Uh, Counselor Davis.
So, um, I understand that if we say we're opening at the end of November, November's not here yet. How long does it take? Uh, we have, if we have to close the pool, if we open it, when will it be open? Will it be the end of November like it says here? I can't see because I got my thing on here.
Well, it said early November.
Well, early November means.
Mr. Backen will clarify.
Uh, thank you, Worship. Mr. Stare, uh, we, we touched upon this, but I think it's worth reiterating. Uh, could you take us through the pool opening process in a very brief fashion and give us a length of time from, uh, moving forward today till the actual opening?
Yes. So the, um, the, the timing for reopening is dependent upon, first of all, um, a decision of which, which facility, um, we're going to open. Um, and then the recall process starts, uh, with, with our, uh, asking, recalling staff back. There's a one week period that they can respond within. And, um, you know, some have taken that full week in the previous recalls. Um, actually, a fair chunk have taken that full week within the, that, uh, recalls. So right up till, you know, one weekend, we still don't know if they have staff ready to come back or not for some of those staff. So there's been staff that have been quick and replying, yes, absolutely, coming back. So just, there's a lot of dominos kind of in play. And, um, beyond that, the user groups, um, the adjustments to that are a factor that, uh, depending on there's new facility, what the usage changes are for each of those facilities and then setting out the schedules. So, um, there's a bit of a, a time for that as well, combined with, uh, the actual staff recall. Beyond that, the training, uh, you know, it'd take an afternoon to do the training for, uh, COVID safety uh, protocols. Um, and, uh, there's a little bit more involved with some of the, the lifeguarding piece. Um, but for the most part, you know, we've said anywhere between two and three weeks, maybe up to four weeks, depending on how the the dominos fall. Um, but really just depends upon, you know, those that are ready to come back to work and, and how quick that can happen.
Okay, so, um, so we, we call the staff in. We, they give us a week notice. They're going to come tomorrow. And this, this order would come as soon as we passed it, like if we passed it. And then tomorrow we get new information and the next day we get new information. Uh, we open up our, we open up our, uh, pools. We've got six, uh, if we have to let six people in at a time or whatever, um, and then we have to close it down because it becomes even worse. We have to give them three weeks' notice pay.
No, we don't.
We don't. We can cut them off the day we say, hey, we're closing the pool.
Based on some initial discussions, uh, that's the case. As I know it right now.
Oh, how long do the initial discussions take?
Well, no, just the, the initial discussions we've had, uh, between ourselves and, uh, human resources and, and working within the workplace workforce adjustment agreement. Uh, we're still under that, um, with the union. So uh, the rules are a little different than when, um, we're, uh, under the normal type of bargaining.
Okay, but I think what happens is, oh, boy, we just, yeah. If things were going the other way, I, I could see moving on here, but, um, I don't know. I don't want anybody to get sick. Um, and, you know, we're going to ask staff to come back and say, well, hey, look at what's happening. Record high COVIDs. Come on into work. Um, I'm being a bit cheeky, but I, I, I'm concerned that, uh, I'd rather have me on everyone's hate list and, and, and still be on their hate list and not have them dead. That's so I'm feeling really, uh, I'm worried about that part of it. Anyhow, those are my comments. Thanks.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, uh, for me today, um, the decision is not as much about the exact date, uh, even though we want to do it as soon as we are able. But today's about deciding on the facility. I think that provides clarity to our recreation, parks and recreation staff to know which facility they will be moving towards. It's not, they're not sitting around deciding which facility. They now would know which is going to be the first facility. And, uh, I know that things as we suggested in the motion November, but we know that there's new information coming out as even today that'll impact that. I'm wondering why, if we can have the motion to choose the facility today and on November 9th, which is our next council meeting, we would be able to have an update from staff in two weeks, November 9th, which would be able to give us a better idea of what possible date might look like. But we would know that the net, over the next two weeks, they would be, staff would be able to focus on Walnut Grove or uh, WC Blair, whatever we decide as a council, which the facility is. And then over the next two weeks, you come back with, uh, some information to staff about the date, or sorry, the council about possible date based on new information that we're going to be getting over the next few days. Um, it's not so much about the end of November to me or, but it's about the facility and providing that clarity to the community and to our staff.
I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, worship. Um, I, I do appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion and, and flesh out a lot of the different, uh, interests that are going on. Um, I agree with, uh, Counselor Whitmarsh and maybe some others. Um, it's not the case that there's no concern about the fact that there's an escalation of COVID. But I think in trying to ascertain without further information, uh, it's difficult to make a broad stroke decision to say, let's just put this off. So for me, it's important, as Counselor Whitmarsh has referenced, to look at which one we would in principle support opening. And then we will have some further concrete information on which to go. Because I think once there is political direction for this, then there can be, uh, some nuanced conversations about potential cost savings and when that would be and many other things that you cannot have in the abstract because without making any kind of decision at all, uh, then it becomes a challenge. And I, I, I sincerely believe as Counselor Woodward has referenced, there are individuals in our community who totally rely on our rec facilities. And I think having them closed and no alternative for an extended amount of time in some ways can be as detrimental as, and I'm not an epidemiologist, so, you know, I don't want to hear about the fact that I don't know anything about contagion. But I really feel that people's well-being, their health, their mental and physical health is really supported by having a rec facility to go to. And therefore, I think that we should just get on with that decision. We've already got more or less an understanding of what the parameters are. And today, I, I, I'm hopeful that we will come up with one or the other as our option going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question. Uh, maybe it's good to just get some clarification because I, I think that there's been some statements from one council in particular that I want to be verified with staff um, in regards to the logic for the firm logic for recommending or listing, uh, WC Blair as the first one to reopen, not just based on lower costs. So could I get, just get a refresher again really quickly on the logic to open WC Blair before Walnut Grove, if there is any?
Mr. Stare? You could, uh, just provide the
Yeah, I can.
rationale behind.
Sure, I, I can provide some, just, um, to, I guess, rehash some of what we talked about before. Um, you know, both facilities are great facilities, both, um, you know, you can do laps in both, you can do therapy in both. Um, in staff's estimation, the smaller footprint of WC Blair would be uh, safer, um, to manage, be safer. Um, also, just as far as, uh, being able to, um, like for staffing, um, it, it would be less, um, as well. So less cleaning, less staff, less, uh, less, uh, safety issues, less people. Um, that said, um, the, uh, you know, the therapeutic aspect is, is, you could call it an anecdotal one because you can do therapy at Walnut Grove as well. Um, it's just, uh, it's, you know, in, in passing with, uh, you know, talking about this with staff over the years, uh, WC Blair has been, you know, become known as more of a therapeutic pool. And not to say you can't do that at Walnut Grove. Um, you know, in some ways it has other. Um, you know, in some ways it has other, uh, amenities there. And so, uh, you know, the, the thought behind it was a combination of safe, uh, safer and also, um, you know, highlighting that it's often seen as a therapeutic, uh, type pool.
Hey, Mr. Stare, can you comment on the, the heating, uh, difference? So there's a bit of a difference in temperatures, I understand.
Yeah, so the, you know, most of the water walking, um, happens at Walnut Grove in the main pool. Um, not to say you couldn't do that in the smaller, um, you know, leisure pool, um, which is warm, but, uh, most of the water walking, uh, in the lanes happens at Walnut Grove in a twenty seven point five degree pool. Um, in, a- at the WC Blair pool, it's, uh, it's thirty degrees. So throughout the pool. So it's a warmer pool and that's why typically, you know, people that, uh, are concerned about the warmer, uh, water will, will go there.
Yeah, so just, uh, Mr. Red, if a bit more there. So I would, um, I'd like to see, you know, I don't, I don't really want to vote against opening, uh, W, uh, Walnut Grove. I would have liked to have seen in some way prior to this amendment to have decided to move forward with the staff recommendation to, or what I perceive as option number one listed first. Um, and you know, have, have an up and down vote on opening WC Blair prior to considering Walnut Grove. Um, if I look at, just refer council to the chart in front of us again here on Zoom. We seem to be in for a penny, you know, in for a pound here at some point that, you know, for one point six, seven percent, we can get WC Blair open, yet for another incremental up to one eight five, we can get both facilities open. So, uh, and, you know, assuming that I'm reading these charts correctly, which I think I am. So, you know, what is the, the reason to, to maybe not look at some other way to, to, I, I don't want to try to amend this amendment again to do what was originally on the floor, which was to have a vote, up and down vote on reopening WC Blair, which is now the sidetracked over to Walnut Grove. So, because I would be open to potentially looking at a timeline to open both facilities, starting with WC Blair, maybe in month, month, month one, and then looking at Walnut Grove in, in month two or week three, week six, something like that. So we're on a path to reopening them. And if something were sincere in the next four to six weeks, we can revisit that. So I don't really want to vote on this motion particularly because I don't want to vote up or down for Walnut Grove before considering WC Blair.
Yeah, thank you. However, this is the amendment in front of us. So if it's defeated, then WC Blair comes back on the floor, but I, I do hear you. I don't think we can amend it to go back again. We have to deal with this amendment one way or the other. Uh, councillor Richard.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, this is not an in principle decision that we're making here right now. This is a very specific decision that says open Walnut Grove in November. I've heard councillor Long say that he wants it open at the beginning of November. We're talking about, maybe it'll be the end of November. So the date is not clear. Um, the other thing, it's not clear whether it's just the pool that we're reopening or if it's the pool and the fitness center. And the options that are on the screen, councillor Woodward just mentioned that, uh, for a marginal difference, we can open both the pools. Well, that's not the way I'm reading this. What I'm reading on the screen is option one is open the pool for rentals and public swim. And that's going to be a two point one seven million expense. Uh, if we just open the Walnut Grove pool, that's going to be a two point four million dollar expense. So I don't even think that this option that we're voting on is clear. And for that reason, I can't support it because I don't know exactly what it is that we're voting on here. It's not an in principle. It's saying open a specific pool. It's not saying a specific pool and associated rec facilities, and it's not saying a specific date. So maybe the clerk could read back the motions so we could all hear it.
Ms. Bauer, you'd have to step back in. The, the que- the question is about the motion that was the amendment. What is the actual amendment, uh, the effect of that on the main motion?
Um, the amendment was that the motion be amended to reopen Walnut Grove Recreation Center Swimming Pool, including a target opening date of early November twenty twenty with an approved, approved additional expense of two hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty twenty and a pre-approved budget increase of one point one million for twenty twenty one.
Okay, so the numbers that are in that motion are not the numbers that are the same on the screen. I don't agree with the November, an early November opening because I think there's too much up in the air. So no, I'm not going to support this, uh, this recommendation. And it also, I'm still wondering if it's meaning to open everything and not just the pool, but all the pool and the fitness facilities, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, uh, well, to councillor Ferguson.
Yeah, certainly a lot's been said today. We probably would have been better off just referring it maybe till next meeting or to the third week of November or something when the budget starts, um. You know, right here, this is my act of pass. I'm an active user of the pool. I ha- I pay a fee to use it. I'm an act of pass member. I would love the opportunity for all our facilities. I want to repeat myself. I am a pool user. I like Blair and I like, uh, Walnut Grove. I like Alder Grove. My wife and I go up to Alder Grove now it's been opened. But we haven't been there since the COVID day. I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding of, um, some folks, and I don't know why, feel that, not a council, but in the public feel that, um, because it's a, um, uh, chlorine in the water that COVID's not there. Well, that's probably the case, but by the same token, people walk in, people walk out, people use railings. There's all sorts of other things as, uh, the health ministries would say. Um, uh, you know, I, here's my routine is I go some to the pool. I go upstairs, use the stairs for running. I use the rec center. I go down after the rec center. I go down into the pool. My, I, when I go to Walnut Grove, I run, I, you're not supposed to run, but I walk fast to the pool because as soon as I hit that water, I know I'm going to be cold. Not so much at Blair. So Blair's may, as councillor Woodward and others have said, it's maybe maintain more for seniors and, and others that, uh, they like a, a little bit warmer water. And it's a lot, bit of a, more of a shock when you're there. I would love, and then I go to the, either the hot tub or the, the steam or sauna. I love all those things. Most of those things will be, I believe, closed. So you also can't get, you know, hundreds of people into these facilities. There are, so that it makes more sense to me, and that's one point six, seven percent of taxes. That's, that's not, those are big numbers. So, you know, I, I agree with, uh, well, what's being said and maybe councillor Woodward said it best about seniors and, and people wanting to use a facility. I agree with the staff report that option one makes the most sense. Um, that's just me. I think that more, you get more and diverse use out of number one. Uh, I would love to open all the facility because I am a user. That would be, I'm kind of it for selfish reasons. But I understand it's councillor Davis. It's a safety. It's the best thing. So, you know, I, at this point in time, I just want to go with the staff report as been mentioned before by other councillors. Walnut Grove, and at least we put that on the table and move according to, uh, what the health and Bon, Dr. Bonnie Hendry in the Health Ministry says in the future.
Officer Long.
It's unfortunate I have to try and defend, uh, the motion that should have been on the agenda. Um, I understand there was a mistake made. I did email it to everybody because there are some, I believe misunderstandings here. The motion is very clear. Councillor Rick to mention that the numbers weren't there. First of all, it says a target opening date, and that was the date that was at the last meeting, which was two or three weeks ago. So that's why the date is still says target in the motion. So whatever it is, whether it's early November, mid-November or late November, the sooner we get going, the better. The two hundred and forty thousand dollars is shown on the chart here because the opening of, uh, uh, Blair was going to be eight seventy and the opening of, uh, Walnut Grove is one point one and the difference being two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the information that you need is here. And, um, not to contradict staff, but I think staff were quite clear to say that the reason that they recommended Blair was because it was going to be cheaper. There'd be less staff involved and it's a smaller facility. Uh, you can use the same argument the opposite way. If the, if you open, uh, Walnut Grove, it's a bigger facility, which means it may in fact be safer because you've got more air, more room for people to move around, less contact happening there. So, you know, tha- that's why I think Walnut Grove is a, is a better choice. It's more expensive. Geographically, it's better. We've had lots of requests for it to be there. As far as the ther- therapeutic aspect is concerned, it's, it's, it's at par because the leisure pool in Walnut Grove is just as warm as the pool in, in Blair. So let's just get on with it. I think this, the, the motion is correct. We almost did it last meeting. We, we, we deferred it just to get a little bit more information, which I really don't think we need. I don't think, I, I supported that, that deferral because we had everything we need. We have everything we need now and everything will be superseded by the, uh, Dr. Henry's orders. So let's just get on with it. Let's open Walnut Grove, get the folks back there that, that want to be there and, uh, and let's move forward, please. So the, the numbers are there though. The two hundred and forty thousand is, is accurate. And, uh, the, the target date of, of, of early November, let's not argue about that because it just says target. So whatever it is, it is.
Thank you. Just some clarification. I believe the, uh, report, um, mentioned WC Blair opening wasn't just financial, it's the manner in which staff can monitor and control, um, the safety of our residents, uh, users and staff. And there's less touch points, a smaller facility. Um, Mr. Back, I think it's more than financial, there's the safety aspect though, so just to be clear.
Thank you, Worship. I, I think it's, it's prudent to just point out that the, the difference in the cost effectively is because of the volume of the space that's being energized. Uh, Walnut Grove is certainly a larger facility than, than, uh, Blair. And because of that, you have larger space, but effectively the same number of users, but not necessarily the same number of staff because the volume of the space itself will dictate of the number of people that are required for view corridors and some of those, those points. So, um, i- it, it, it is less complicated, uh, to open Blair because of its size, more complicated to open Walnut Grove, but we can certainly do so. Uh, the timing will depend upon, as Mr. Stare said, the callback provisions for staff and that can, it will be a matter of weeks, but that is certainly something we can work to. And lastly then is to the financials, uh, Mr. Stare has pointed out that the numbers on the screen, I think are the updated numbers given our best estimates and they do change. Keep in mind that these numbers represent cohorts of fifty, uh, when we may be at a different cohort size. We simply don't know that yet. Smaller cohorts mean effectively larger costs. But Mr. Stare, I think there's some confusion as to option one, option two and current status. Uh, I, I don't think those are cumulative. I think those are the cost for each band. So, uh, can you clarify that the current status has the cost as referenced and the, and one percent revenue enhancement? The next option, which is Blair adds an additional, I emphasize adds an additional, a cost and a one point six, seven. So the effect is two point six, seven. And if you wanted to go to the next one, you'd have to add that to it as well. Is that correct?
Um, sorry, it's not actually. The, um, so the, just first of all, maybe I'll just back up. Um, the financial implications to the end of twenty twenty were updated on the slide here based on changing the opening date. So there's, uh, you know, there's less, um, less money being spent in this versus what was presented at the October fifth uh, presentation. So that's why these numbers are slightly less in twenty twenty, but the same as was presented previously for twenty twenty one. Um, so the, the first, um, uh, portion in twenty twenty one is one point three plus the eight seventy, uh, equals a two point one seven. So that's, that's cumulative at two point one seven million. Uh, and the same thing, one point three million of the current plus the one point one equals a two point four total expense. So the, the cumulative, um, numbers are shown there as either two point one seven or two point four with our current facilities.
So Mr. Stare, though, that would suggest then that the, the, uh, that once Blair is opened, it will only cost an additional, what, uh, uh, twenty three or thirty thousand dollars or so to, to open Walnut Grove? Is that what you're suggesting? Or, or isn't, aren't those numbers independent? We just have to be very clear for councils. They can make an informed decision.
Yeah, so for just to the end of twenty twenty, um, the end of November through, uh, through the end of the year, uh, there's a forty thousand dollar difference. Um, for, for that between opening Blair and opening Walnut Grove in twenty twenty one, difference is approximately three hundred thousand. Um, in difference there in opening.
In addition to the current expenses though, because you can, those columns are being, being added. Is that correct?
That's right. So current is one point three, opening WC Blair with the current is two point one seven. Opening Walnut Grove with the current is two point four million.
But that does, when you get to Walnut Grove, that does not include opening Blair. Those are alternative options.
Alternative options, yeah.
Yes. So if one wanted to open all three, what would the, uh, total be then?
If you were to open all three for twenty twenty one, it would be three point two, seven million.
Right. You have to add them together. That's what I was trying to impress upon council. Thank you, Mr. Stare.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Whitmarsh.
Uh, thanks. Just a question to, uh, staff. Um, if, if we were to move forward and, and pass this motion, um, how, how would, uh, we, how would staff expect that we would deal with the date opening in light of the new information receiving now? Uh, we assume that all the other information in terms of costs and those things would stay the same, uh, except for maybe twenty twenty. But how would we deal with the date issue? Um, what would be a suggestion?
Uh, yeah, Worship, but I, I think what we look at is we, we are assuming it's roughly at the three to four week start. So once we have the indication to go, we simply start the process and it will follow, uh, as best we can. There's a number of variables, of course, in terms of the time process it takes for staff to make the determination as to recall. So I think that's inherent in the recommendation. Uh, the, the, I think the larger challenge for us at this point is getting a very firm understanding of the size of groups that can be utilizing it. Uh, and that's a fluid situation. That's something that as we say, we just, uh, we're just learning today, but what that looks like. So it's certainly something we may have to revisit because that will certainly skew the, the, uh, numbers further. But I don't think that skews the intent of council. We would simply have to look at it, given the health order that's in place in terms of the size of groups and open to accommodate those sizes and, uh, advise council the implications.
Okay, so we could have maybe an update to council on the date, say on the November ninth meeting.
Yes. Okay, uh, councillor Woodward, your hand is up. I don't know if that's from before or if you must.
No, that's a, that's a new one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, yeah, I'm gonna have, I just, I hate to belabor this honestly. I really do. I'm gonna have to get clarification on this chart now. Because the way I am reading this was obviously, I, I think that there was actually two different answers to the same question there in the space of about a minute and a half. So now I need to get it clarified again that the yellow section of this chart is showing the additional expense to open each facility independently. So it's confusing because you have additional expense and total expense adding up the column in the green into each option one and two separately. So it is not, in my interpretation, please get this clarified. It's not, you know, it's not four, it's not four point five million to reopen WC Blair and Walnut Grove. It's two point one, it's, it's additional expense of eight seventy and additional expense of one point one for about one point nine in fiscal twenty twenty one. So can I please get this clarified? Because we're making decisions based on five million. When I'm interpreting it, it's not two point four plus two point one seven. It's eight seventy plus one point one for fiscal twenty twenty one.
So yes, you're correct. Um, the, the one point three million is the current projection for current facilities open. That's the arenas and Alder Grove pool, uh, for twenty twenty one. And then any additional expense is, uh, if opening WC Blair is projected to be eight hundred and seventy in twenty twenty one. Uh, just the pool. And just to clarify that, it's underlined. Um, and then sort of for a total of two point one seven million for those combined.
Yeah, so to clarify, if we wanted to do option three, which is to open both facilities within a roughly the same time period, we're looking at an additional expense. I'm, I'm ignoring twenty twenty just for the sake of discussion. Twenty twenty one is eight seventy plus one point one, which is roughly two, which is, you know, manageable amount when the tax increase one percent is roughly one point three six.
So it would be the one point three plus the, the, uh, the one.
Yeah, so I, 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 Mr. Stare, just for the sake of discussion, I'm not including the one point three anymore.
Sure, okay.
Done that, that's done. That's, that's going on. So if we wanted to reopen WC Blair, it is eight seventy and then WC Walnut Grove is one point one for a total additional of roughly, you know, two. Would that be fair?
Right.
Yeah, so now would be rough, I'm just guessing at one point three, three, six per tax increase, we're looking at about one and a half percent. My math isn't great there, but roughly plus or minus, would that be fair?
Yeah.
For a total of two point five in twenty twenty one, just to clarify a hundred percent. So hopefully council followed most of that. So for me, I'm, I'm struggling to say, okay, we're going to open Walnut Grove and leave WC Blair. So I, I would like to council vote this down and then, uh, go with the staff recommendation to have an up or down vote on WC Blair, which is what staff recommended for safety and therapeutic reasons originally, and then have a separate vote on Walnut Grove. That's what I would prefer. I hope the council will go along with that. But in order to get there, uh, we need to vote this down, this sort of attempt to hijack it and, and for the preference of one member, thanks.
Oh, come on.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go on to Counsel Ferguson.
Well, I think I don't believe very well. I think that Counselor Woodward has explained, and also, we probably would have been better off, maybe just going on with the waiting for a week or two. But anyway, I think he said it all. I think it makes more sense to go with staff recommendation according to the numbers provided. Thank you.
I've spoken a couple times. I'm just gonna say for myself, I think that WC Blair is a better option to go. It's a smaller facility. I think we can ensure safety of our users a lot better there. I think that's a start. Doesn't mean that Walnut Grove could be open in the future. But we need to go slowly. The other thing is, you know, at one point, council had authorized the ELC and their staff to go through closings and re openings of our facilities. We're now getting into council making these decisions, which is fair. Certainly, we have that right and ability to do that. But I'm just cautioning that, you know, these are difficult decisions to make, and, you know, I can listen to what health authorities have to say and having staff make those decisions, sometimes it's better. But I'm going to call the question on the Walnut Grove and the amendment to open Walnut Grove. So call the question. And if maybe that chart could come down so I can see all the taxes being turned from staff and you can see all their hands. Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed?
Opposed.
So I've got Mayor Froze, Counselor Woodward, Counselor Richter, Counsel Ferguson opposed, so that fails on.
Davis.
And Davis opposed, that fails. But now back to the main motion. And I see two hands up for that, Counsel Long and then Woodward.
Yeah, well, I guess, let's be clear now. We we've spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out what we're voting on. So now we're voting on opening Blair instead of Walnut Grove. Now, I, you know, so that, that, yes. Contrary to what another counselor said, we can't go back now and vote on Walnut Grove again. So Walnut Grove is out. Thank you very much. And now we'll vote on on Blair. And of course, I'm supportive of opening facilities. So I will support this, but I mean, I really, it's a shame that we can't get Walnut Grove open as well.
I think Walnut Grove will get open at some point, but this motion speaks to WC Blair. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, no, I don't. I don't accept that characterization of what's occurring with council. I think we we, you know, we need to vote on, in my opinion, we're we're heading in the direction, as a majority here, to vote on reopening WC Blair upon the recommended timeframe, which is now sometime in November, maybe as as latest end of November. But if we're on a path to reopening, I think that that will will give people a lot of comfort. The, at least of WC Blair is recommended by staff for the reasons that Mr. Mayor, that you outlined, which are are very good ones to consider. I don't accept the premise that we can't consider Walnut Grove after this motion. So I just want to let council know that, Mr. Mayor, if you'll accept it, you know, I would like to get a motion on the floor to consider Walnut Grove separately, and that potentially could be deferred to the next meeting, which is only a few weeks away to give council some time to consider that. Would be on a path to debating Walnut Grove perhaps at the next meeting. But so if I were to put that motion on, I would accept a deferral if people are not prepared to make that decision today. But I would like to have it in some form, maybe on the agenda for the next council meeting to consider Walnut Grove, but today, get on a path to reopening WC Blair as recommended by staff.
Could be a notice of motion also, because an amendment failed doesn't preclude having a new motion on on the Walnut Grove at any time. So that could be a notice of motion for the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if you, we can discuss that after this, but if you prefer it in that form, that's fine. I just think it would be good for for council to even have an option to to open it today. Thanks.
Well, we are, it's just I'm looking at the timing, and we're not going to be opening Walnut Grove. You know, if that defeated, with WC Blair staff, we'd be dealing with that. We are running short. Saying there's another option.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Counsel Richter.
Yes, well, I think if there's another motion coming forward on Walnut Grove, it should be coming forward as a notice of motion this meeting for consideration or after this meeting for consideration. I mean, we've just voted down Walnut Grove opening in November. That's the motion that was on the floor, and that's what was voted down. So coming back with another motion on Walnut Grove right now is redundant, and I don't think it's necessary. So I would encourage Counselor Woodward to put a notice of motion forward for the next meeting, if in fact that's what he wants to do. Thank you.
Sounds like Counsel Long will do that as well.
Counselor Woodmarsh.
Yeah, I'll certainly be supporting the opening of of WC Blair. And I think that now that we've just defeated the Walnut Grove one, I do think a notice of motion is more appropriate, particularly since we'll have more information, and there is a bigger budget implication that we'll have to consider, and I don't think we should necessarily belabor that today. So I'm I'm interested in talking about it for sure and having go to the budget process. But for today, I'll be supporting WC Blair, and I would look forward to Walnut Grove discussion later.
Counsel Ferguson.
I wanted to ask the staff a quick question now that we've talked, we've had a little discussion on Walnut Grove. Was it, if I may, through steer to staff, was Walnut Grove reopening not part of the report that was submitted to it, if I may, through its hair?
That that's correct. Mr. Mr. Stare's chart shows our baseline, and then the cost with option one that's built, that includes the the green. Then the second option includes the baseline with the cost assuming the green, but it does not include the total of the two facilities. That would be something that would be the, well, for the total.
And if I may, that was something that was proposed for the future, a couple of months down the road or something, if I may? Was that not in the report as well?
The options include the short term and the medium term, which is is correct. It's just the cumulative effect given our our concerns about safety and our concerns about the financial implications going forward.
Yeah. So, Mr. Mayor, depending on what happens from Dr. Henry and, well, not Fraser Health, the BC Health Ministry, you know, that will determine what we as a counselor to determine what we're gonna do in this report. And if a notice of motion does indeed come forward, we can, we will have more information from the Health Ministry and more information to decide accordingly, and we'll see what happens. But I'm in favor of WC Blair right now. Thank you.
I'm gonna call the question on the motion. All those in favor? And opposed?
I'm opposed.
Counsel Richter is opposed, and the motion, and Counsel Davis is opposed. And the motion carries. Okay, so I think here is that it gives some time, but if number of council which put a notice of motion forward, that'd be appropriate in other districts to move this forward, especially in light of the the time and the work that we have to do yet today. Thank you. I'll move on to E seven, the Alter and Redevelop. And this is just a motion to receive the report. I can have a motion, please. Counsel Whitmarsh, the secondary. Secondary. Counsel Davis, see no discussion. I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is, unanimously. Move on to E eight, two sixteen Street corridor study. And again, a motion to receive. Have a motion, please. Counsel Arneson and the secondary.
Second.
That's Whitmarsh, second. Discussion, Counsel Richter.
Yes, I would like to know with regards to the delegations that we had today on from the two schools on on two oh eighth. What can we do about those schools? Like, can we get thirty kilometer an hour zones in there?
Yeah. As I understand that the report outlines what is, I guess, under regulations under the traffic studies or traffic regulations that we follow. That's not necessary. However, council, I do believe has that option to to add, add that. Mr. Backen.
Actually, Mr. Seffi and Mr. Cordero, I think, are online, and I think they're in a better position to comment. And I'll I'll introduce the subject matter by saying that generally speaking, arterials don't have the speed restrictions, but as was indicated, it may be possible. But, Mr. Seffi, Mr. Cordero.
Okay, well, before they start speaking, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make notice that I wish to put an amendment forward that thirty kilometer an hour speed zones go in front of those schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the, we'll hear from the staff and another, again, a normal processes when we have delegations, we do defer them to staff, but we go through that process. Staff can even comment on that. On the third quarter zones.
Thank you, your worship. As far as the delegation is concerned, the fact remains that two sixteen Street is an arterial road. And as such, is not recommended by staff to have a speed limit lower than fifty kilometers per hour. The presence of schools fronting arterial roads is not a reason for implementing a speed restriction. This is for several reasons. The fact that there are other schools that front arterial roads. The fact that there are measures that are recommended in accordance with federal guidelines that are to be implemented in lieu of the speed restrictions, such as provision of of landscaping, buffering, fences, distances, et cetera, et cetera, that would be in lieu of a speed restriction on major arterial roads. And the fact that as a general rule, your worship, whatever I guess is done in one area should be done in other areas. So that sets a bit of a precedence in terms of what would be an expectation in other locations. The other consideration, your worship, would be the fact that based on the South Coast British Columbia Transportation Act, if there are going to be measures implemented that would then be part of the major road network would require approval of of TransLink. So depending on which section of two sixteen Street we are discussing, it would require approval of TransLink. And I guess as far as a referral back to staff, certainly subject to council's direction, staff can provide more information. As Mr. Backen referenced, Mr. Cordero is here. He's got some some slides prepared in case council had some questions with regard to the report. That was done. It's the first phase of a two-phase report to do with the corridor study, two sixteen corridor study, North Highway one. And that was directed by council for staff to to do. And while it has taken longer than expected, for several reasons, your worship, one was obviously the pandemic. The other reason was because staff, contrary to, I guess, what may have been the the conjecture in in the community, staff was actually insisting on a more rigid set of circumstances and and assumptions that would have resulted in a more, I guess, conservative approach in terms of looking at the requirements than a more relaxed approach. So this was the reason why it was delayed. Nevertheless, it's been now completed. Staff is presenting it to council for for information. And that it will be followed up on based on council direction with another report, the phase two, once the traffic patterns have had an opportunity to adjust based on interchange now having been over.
Thank you very much. So this is a motion to receive. I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to bylaws for.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I made I made an indication that I wanted to put an amendment on this on this motion.
I I I gave some time. I didn't see your hand go up. And so amendment, I would have.
My hand is up. It's up there. It's been up.
Counsel, Counsel Richter, Counsel Richter.
Yes, I would like to amend.
Excuse me, Counsel Richter, the motion's prepared. That was a receipt motion. It'd be appropriate to make a secondary motion. You're mending a receipt motion. So if you're gonna make a motion, you're completely within your right to do that.
Okay, I will put, I will put a secondary motion forward, and that is that that the a thirty kilometer per hour speed zone on two sixteen Street be implemented in the areas of the two elementary schools.
Second motion, Ferguson.
Point of order.
And I would like to speak to this. I know that Mr. Seffi has said that this is an arterial road. But guess what? There are two schools there, and those two schools have been there for a long time.
Yeah. Like the point of order, the point of order.
We have a policy to refer delegations to staff, so this would not be normally done, that you would make a motion on the floor.
So the motion's on the floor, but we.
Again, this is not a point of order.
Excuse me.
Oh, I think.
I'll let Counsel Long, Counsel Long. I'll let Counsel Richter speak in the speaking order. If you wish to make a referral, deferral, that's fine, too. So that would be appropriate. Counsel Richter, excuse me.
Okay.
Yeah, policy.
One size, one size doesn't fit all, and I think that this stretch of two sixteen Street is a very unique area. It might be a collector road, but it's a collector road with two elementary schools on it. And those kids depend on us having rules to protect their safety. And so I very much think that we do need to have speed zones, reduced speed zones in front of the schools for the sake of those children. So that's why I'm putting forward this motion. We we need to act on it. And the families that have come in or the the delegates that came and talked to us today with their overwhelming petitions indicate to me that there are a lot of families in the area that think we need to act on it as well. So that's why I'm putting forward the motion, and I hope that it carries because we can't allow those children to be more at risk because we've decided this is a collector arterial road.
So I just want to go back to the point of order that was raised. So in the procedure bylaw, thirteen point zero seven states if a public delegation or citizen requests a substantive decision by council, the request must be referred to staff for review for information as to the background, financial implications, staff recommendations prior to any action being taken. So with that in mind, certainly this motion's on the floor, and we'll keep it on the floor, but I think a referral motion to staff would be in line with our with our policy on referring delegations to staff. So certainly, I think it'd be the way around this and do see the procedure bylaws states speaks to that. So so I'll just, I'll just go through the speakers list. We can have our say, but we are running out of time, so I think we do want to get that information back. Counsel Ferguson, do you have anything to add? This will be coming back.
Yeah, I do have a couple of things, very, very quickly. I mean, obviously, we're in, we're in the Zoom type meetings, and if if the if the actual amendment was made during the report, that would have been in order. But anyway, I think it's a good idea to proceed with this, knowing the corridor studies there as well. As a user of that road, as many of counselors are, I slow down to those areas anyway. And it's easy, if you don't watch it with a distance, especially from eighty-eight to ninety-six on two sixteen, to kind of get the get the speed up on the vehicles. And so it 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 gets the safety. Well, I like the fact the measures with those screens and traffic counter and traffic, whatever they call those things. Those are candy because they 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 ask people to slow down. So I think it's it's a good measure to do, and safety, safety, safety is always important. So I will be supporting the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just caution, staff, there is more information that we could receive on this. When school zones are put in place, they're generally beside schools that don't have fencing, and it's a risk children playing on playgrounds have traffic going by the school zone. This particular school zone has fencing. It does meet the criteria. So I'm just cautioning that you know, we we don't have all the information. And certainly, the children will be walking to school, but they're not gonna be walking in the school zone the entire way to school. So they're at risk all the way along the route that they take to school. School zones are in place to protect the children who are at the school. And so there's more information staff could be providing. That, Counsel Long.
Thanks, your worship. So apparently, we're, this motion is going against the policy that we have, which is to refer to staff. It is a substantial decision. I'm not saying I support it one way or another. But I do support proper order, and I think that the appropriate thing would be for staff to come back with a report, and then we can make a ruling, I guess, based upon the wisdom of this council. So a referral motion is absolutely adamant in my mind, okay? Because this, we're not experts on traffic. We need to understand all the unintended consequences. We need to have all that information before us, and then we can make a decision quite quite happily. But without that information, I think council's taking, well, it's just, it's it's just not appropriate. And so when you're ready, it should be referred to staff, and then it can come back with a report, and then the motion can be voted upon.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I just think there's lots of information. I certainly want to encourage safety, but I think it's best for us to refer this. It's not gonna be a long process, but I think we refer it, and then we'll make that decision. But I agree, council does have to make the decision, and we don't want it to be too long.
Counsel Richter.
So is there a referral motion on this now?
No, not yet. I I did say if people want to speak to it now, but I think referral motion would be in order if you wish to make that.
Okay, well, I, you know, the people who. Okay, well, I, you know, the people who live up there have been talking about this problem for four years now. Why are we deferring it, let's just get on with it, and I think it's pretty sad that they've had to go to all the effort of collecting petition signatures in order to convince us to do what we should have done in the first place, which is to put speed zones in around those schools. I'm sorry, kids have to come before cars and trucks, that's it.
Counsel Arneson.
Sorry, your worship, yes, I, I wanted to weigh in because I feel that this has been a discussion that's been very lengthy, and I understand protocol and procedure, and I feel unfortunately, if we continue to defer this, that the community will be left feeling bereft. I know that they put a lot of effort into this, it's been suggested, there's been petitions, there's been copious writings, there's been multi-TransLink, all of the above, and to me, if today it comes down to the fact that we are being requested by the citizens of the community on behalf of the children that live in and around that area, that they would like to have this, then we should do this expeditiously, because from their perspective, and I'm not weighing in on that, but to have a new interchange in an area where there's already pre-existing schools, it just strongly suggests to me that we need to do the right thing, and if, if we were to delay and something happened, I, I think that we would all be troubled by the fact that we didn't act more expeditiously, so I'm in favor of doing this because I think that it's been long enough that the individuals have expressed this concern, so I'm going to support this today.
Counsel Long.
This is, this is the first time it's come before council, there's been hundreds of emails sent around, but this has never been entertained by council before, so it isn't, in my mind, an unusual delay. We need the proper information, how, how many other schools are there on arterial roads? Perhaps the Vision Zero would say, let's drop all of the speed limits to thirty kilometers an hour. And, and I think we're making assumptions and statements about safety that we're not really authorized to do. I, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but I would much prefer to have staff giving us all of the ramifications and all the details involved, what about TransLink, what about a truck route, lots and lots of things to consider. So I think, as you've said, and I don't know how we managed to bypass our own policy, this should be referred to staff, and it shouldn't be a great delay, it should come back as soon as possible, so I'm making that motion once more.
Thank you, so the move to referral, is there a second? Counsel Whitmarsh seconds. So I think we can just time for a quick, there's two speakers, Counsel Davis and Counsel Whitmarsh.
Actually, sorry, I was, I was on before the deferral, what, is this on the?
It's on deferral, we'll just come back.
The deferral means it's going to go-
It comes back, referring back, it's actually referring to staff to come back to information to them.
I, I, I think, I think I think we need to do that, I think it needs, like, I, I think, okay, I totally support putting, lowering the two speed limits there, actually. By, if you've noticed, I, I, we drive, I drive that quite often, and my silage wagon has come back twice now with a flat tire because they actually have so much stuff on that road that Logan had hit the, and took the tire outside dual off on, like, if you notice those little lumps of asphalt, and I saw, one time I saw somebody get their pedal stuck on the darn thing and have a problem, they, they, they actually, I think, have slowed down traffic by putting all that stuff on there, because I know when I drive it, I, I almost feel like I need to get my truck realigned, my old Ford truck, because it wanders, and you don't have a lot of room to wander on both sides of the freeway. However, the overpass is there. It's not a bad idea to put it on that side, and if you think traffic's too fast on that side, you should see what it's like on the other side coming down two sixteenth. So I guess my point is we just can't go out there and dig a hole and stick a sign in, I think, because we have rules and regulations, we have the bylaw, and so we, we've got to give it to staff for, for two or three days at least to say, okay, well, this is what we need to protect ourselves, we're going to put this sign up, and you know, we do need the rules there, I, I understand, I'm going to support putting up, dropping the speed limit, but we've, we've got to, we've got to put somebody in charge of doing it, and they can't, like I say, I could go up there tonight and stick, dig a hole, and if that would save somebody's life, I would too, but I, I, we do need to refer to staff, we don't even know how much it's going to cost, and we can we can pay the cost, that's not a problem. So that's why it's got to go to staff and come back right away, it can, it can be the next meeting and we can get it done. So I just, those are just some comments, got to do it for safety, over.
Right, I call a question, a referral, all those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Arneson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Richter, Counsel Ferguson, defeated on a tie vote, so we go back to the main motion. And I think I'll, I'll speak to that. I've read the report, and I've been police department for nineteen years, I was in collision investigation, lowering the speed limit in front of a school such as this with all the other measures that are in place is not going to do anything, lowering the speed limit throughout the township for thirty, there's been calls and other reasons for that to happen, but really it boils down to other safety measures that we've put in, so I'm not, I don't believe that this is going to solve anything, I don't support it. So I'm going to call the question on the main motion, all those in favor? Opposed? Reposed? Counsel Long? Motion carries. Okay, move on to bylaws, first and second reading?
No, I can't oppose it, so it's-
Well, yeah, you can, actually, it's up to you, you're not opposed, okay, fair enough, I'm opposed because I believe in science, I've done this job for a long time, please, this will help. Okay, bylaws, the first and second reading, F1, official community plan amendment, reason only application number one zero zero two zero three, development permit application number one zero one zero one two, bylaw five six two six, bylaw five six two seven, have a motion, please. Counsel Davis in the second, or? In the second? Counsel Arneson, discussion, see none, call a question, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries. Move on to, F2, official community plan amendment and reason only application number one zero zero one seven eight, and development permit application number one zero one one five seven, bylaw five six four two, five six four three, have a motion, please.
I'll move that.
Davis in a second, or? Second? Have, same with on the second, this thing?
Ferguson, Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
There, Counsel Whitmarsh opposed, and Counsel Arneson opposed. Okay, carries. Move on to bylaws for consideration, third reading, and reason only application number one zero zero five two seven, and development permit application number one zero one one eight nine, bylaw five six three five, bylaw man, have a motion, please.
I'll move.
Counsel.
Second, Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson, discussion. See none, call a question, all those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Richter opposed.
I'm opposed.
Counsel Arneson opposed.
Thank you.
And carries, thank you. To the bylaws for final adoption, twenty twenty-one permits of tax exemptions, bylaw five six four four, and five six four five, have a motion, please.
I'm on the table.
Counsel Long in a second, in the second.
Second it.
Counsel Davis, and discussion, see none, call a question, all those in favor? Opposed, and carries, thank you. Move on to license, bylaw amendment, cannabis processing, research, development, and nonprofit businesses, bylaw number five five seven three, can I have a motion, please?
Long.
Counsel Long, second by Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion, see none, call a question, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Correspondence, J1 has been withdrawn, so there is A two, three, four, five.
Move receipt.
For receipt, motion by Counsel Long to receive those four. Counsel Davis seconds, discussion, all the question, all those in favor, oh, there is one, Counsel Arneson.
Thank you, your worship, your worship, I'm through you to Mr. Backen, I have an inquiry having to do with these requests for reconsideration. And I'm not sure at what portion of the meeting I could move this. So I, I will take guidance from staff, but basically, what I'm proposing is to move reconsideration of all the applications that were not endorsed at the last council meeting on October nineteenth, so that all applications will advance for consideration at first and second reading.
Is that in other business? Mr. Backen, other business and?
Other business, okay.
Yeah, and substantially, you can do this, a notice of motion too, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So I'll call a question, all those in favor, receipt, opposed? Carries, thank you. And committees, we've got K1, agriculture advisory, economic enhancement, heritage advisory, recreation, culture perks, have a motion for K1?
I'll move, Ferguson.
Ferguson moves, seconder.
Long.
Counsel Long, seconds, discussion. Counsel Arneson, hands up from before. Okay, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Opposed, and carries. K2's agriculture advisory economic enhancement committee recommended motion, and that is to receive and endorse the recommendations, and further staff for the report to council to receive representation information. That was, we already had that presentation.
Yeah.
So, motion? Counsel Long, second, Counsel Arneson, discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Carries, thank you. Page three is, I-
Hey, your worship.
The fall.
Just clarifying, as to K2, then, it was to receive the report and endorse the recommendations?
Yeah.
From the presentation, so the ones that were listed, so we'll go back and list them all out from the presentation, I think there was nine or eleven or something?
There. I think the only one that impacted township was appointing someone to the community director.
Oh, totally fine, just want to make sure we can capture the right spirit.
Thank you. Great, so K3, against the endorse the work plant, the agriculture advisory economic work. Work plant, can I have a motion, Counsel Davis, second?
Ferguson.
Second, Counsel Ferguson, discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, and carries, thank you. With the mayor's report? And presentation? Excuse me? Sorry? Okay, so the pictures didn't make here, so I'll just provide our report. So good afternoon, everyone who's watching out there in Zoom land, and in the chambers. A few events have taken place over the last couple of weeks, starting with Thanksgiving, and I hope everyone enjoyed their long weekend. On Tuesday, October thirteenth, was the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce's official swearing-in ceremony for its directors and presidents, and this event took place virtually, which I was pleased to attend, just at AGM. The annual Langley Leadership Prayer Breakfast was also virtual this year, and I was pleased to provide a pre-recorded message. As well, Acting Mayor Arneson attended the Fraser Valley Regional District Employee Recognition Dinner on Wednesday, October the seventh. We had an official painting of the first poppy of the season on Thursday, October twenty-second, for Alderbrook Legion President Doug Hadley. Remember, stay is next month, November eleventh, local ceremony is being held virtually. We encourage all of you to watch and think about the brave men and women who gave so much for our country, our freedom, and our way of life. Also note that the changes to the twenty twenty ceremonies limited public and streaming. On Thursday, October twenty-second, was the annual Chamber of Commerce Business Excellence Awards. Even though the event was virtual, it was excellent, it was excellent, recipients this year included the Joseph Richard Group for Excellence in Collaboration, Kim Snow of Kim's Angels in the category of frontline hero, Rosalind Henderson of Big Brothers Big Sisters for inspirational leader, Well Seasoned Gourmet Food Store for Most Innovative, and Mountain View Veterinary Hospital for Employer of the Year. Congratulations to all of the nominees and all of the winners this year. And so that ends my report. I know Metro Vancouver meeting is coming up, Metro has been, through all the committees, been deliberating the budget to go forward for twenty twenty-one, and we had council councils on Saturday, where members of all the councils of Metro Vancouver were able to participate and hear the presentation. And I know for some, I've heard it several times, and staff have mentioned that this was their sixteenth presentation, but it was a good opportunity for people to ask questions about the Metro Vancouver budget. It's good to see that Metro Vancouver, we had a workshop in June, they listened to some of the concerns with COVID and have looked for ways to reduce the impact over the next couple of years going forward. So that, that's my report, Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and I, I would concur, it was very interesting metro meeting. I, I did want to clarify what was on the mayor's report in the sense that there was a pre-scheduled event for the Fraser Valley Regional Library Recognition Dinner, but in light of COVID, that didn't actually happen, but it did appear in the formal schedule, but I would say what did happen was the FERL board was able to meet for the first time in quite some time in a distant manner, and had a very good meeting, a pre-budget meeting, so I just want to bring that forward. And also that the board in recognition of former councillor Grant Ward's long stint working as the chair and as a board member for the FERL, received flowers and a card to his family, so, and, and gratitude for the efforts that he made for many years on behalf of the library. So that's it.
Counsel Ferguson.
Sure, Mayor, under the Metro Vancouver report, I guess many of us council members with the council councils saw the budget, and I'm sure that you'll have some more to say about that. At the Indigenous Committee, we again continued on with our relationships with the many bands and native organizations throughout the region, Indigenous communities, as well as treaty negotiations I go into again this Wednesday. It's important to note, when there's a water project, a major water project, a major liquid waste project, and the lake, the Indigenous communities are always involved, because it's important that we have an excellent working relationship with Metro Vancouver. And the staff and of course the board as well have done a great job, and we've really come a long way, and we've got a long way to go as well, but we're proceeding in the right direction, especially with regarding reconciliation. The Liquid Waste Committee, we're proceeding with more energy reduction, waste to energy, and also other methods for making sure that those plants can give back both to the, the operation and saving money, so that there's a number of things that they're proceeding with, I hope to have more to report in the future. And I've asked for the staff to provide us on how much we actually are saving in monies and monies accordingly. And the last thing, again, I always like to give a message for the public, when you have your masks, don't flush them down the toilet, put them in the garbage, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and one more thing I'd like to add, TransLink CEO, Kevin Desmond has announced he's stepping down from TransLink in February. He's been with TransLink for five years, he's done a commendable job, going through a lot of challenges. And in my mind, turning, the, turning TransLink around as far as public perception, and standing up for, for TransLink whenever we could, and bringing a lot of measures that have gone into efficiencies, helped transfer, transition us into a cleaner fleet, electric buses, innovation. I think he's been a great leader, and I know we're going to miss him, it's going to be hard to find replacement for Kevin, so. We knew that day would come, we're lucky to have somebody of his stature leading TransLink, so we wish him well. Okay, so with that, and we want to other, I'm, sorry, two items from prior meetings, so we have whole one, and this is appointment of municipal directors to the Metro Vancouver Region Board, so this has been moved. What happened to this one?
It was referred to today.
So it's been referred as it on, on the table? Okay, so it's removed and seconded, so we'll go right into the motion. So if there's any members to speak to this motion? Maybe Counsel Richter, you moved it, did you ever speak here?
Um, yes, so. Yeah, I don't think I said a whole lot about it the last time because we didn't have a full council, but it seems to me that the importance of Metro Vancouver representation is increasing. A large part of that importance is increasing just simply because of the costs of Metro Vancouver, which of course are passed on to our local residents. We know, for example, in areas such as GVS and DD, they're building tertiary plants, there's been some talk about perhaps moving into having one sewerage district, the water budget is going up to a peak rate of ninety-five cents per cubic liter in this budget that's here, now, the budget that's in front of us right now, they've managed to keep the costs at three point five, or a three point five percent increase. uh, they've managed to keep the costs at, uh, three point five, or, um, a three point five percent increase, or they're about three point two. Uh, but those costs are not going to stay low because Metro has been, um, uh, building for growth and, uh, and the, the costs are just going to continue to increase in the future. So, the voice that we have met at the Metro Vancouver table is very important, and I think that, um, we should be transparent in our processes here about how our representatives get chosen, uh, to go to the Metro table. And that's what this motion is all about. It's about putting transparency into the process, it's about allowing uh, uh, representatives or people on this council who want to put their names forward for either one of those two positions, uh, to make a public statement about why they think they should be there, uh, the voting should be done, and, uh, the voting will probably be done by, uh, secret ballot as it is in camera. But we also need to make sure, I think, that the people that we're sending to Metro have at least fifty percent support of the council. And, uh, that's why this motion is here, and I hope that, uh, council will be supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, counsel for referring this, so I could be present, and I do appreciate the sentiments of Counsel Richter, although I do believe, worship, all of, it's usually the policy that we can do, with all of our committee's appointments have been done and closed because it's dealing with personnel. And under the legislation, it's, uh, something that we can do, but I do appreciate those sentiments, so without a call, Counsel Ferguson.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, although I appreciate the.
I missed, uh, I missed Counsel Whitmarsh, my apologies, but Counsel Ferguson, you go ahead, and I'll go to Whitmarsh.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate the comments of, uh, of Counsel Richter, I think that I've done my part as, uh, uh, an alternate director to the, uh, Metro Vancouver Board, I've always tried to provide my reports, I even go down and talk, discuss with staff, uh, other than normal committee meetings, and try to do the best, best I can for, for, we are in representing all of the region, not just Langley, but I also take that into consideration of Langley's position on the board. So although it's a double-fold position that we take, although I'm an alternate director, I think I do my part on the committees. Um, I, I think the past way we've done it is the best probably way, it's the most, uh, decorum, I guess, way. So, there's real no need to change it, I can see right now, but, uh, I do appreciate, uh, discussing Metro Vancouver issues, uh, at the council table, uh, once, once every meeting. Thank you.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Um, yes, thank you, just, just for, uh, first, uh, point I had was just for clarification, because I, I, as I heard, uh, Counsel Richter talk about this particular motion, I thought I heard her suggest that, um, that the actual votes would still uh, stay in the special closed meeting, but, um, maybe I misunderstood, because that's not what the motion says, I just want clarification on that.
It would be as the motion says. And that was what.
The motion says it would be held in open council.
That's correct, that's what the motion says, so that's what it would be.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine, I misunderstood. Um, just, I guess my, my comment to it, as I think that we're i- in this, I think the way we voted for advisory committees and other kinds of things, um, I think that council members should be able to have the freedom to vote for who they would like to vote for without, uh, feeling that, uh, pressure from, uh, members of the public or from, uh, necessarily other councillors on who they should be voting for. And I think when we go to a public voting, while it appears to be more transparent, uh, the vote itself might be transparent, but the reasons for doing that vote seem, aren't, aren't transparent, and it's not really a fully transparent system. And I think that there is the, the, you know, the public will then know how they vote, there'll be all kinds of, uh, comments made on potentially social media for why did you vote that way, or why did you vote another way, and, and there's a, and theories, uh, developed about why people are voting certain ways, and I know they're sure that's going to be helpful for the council. I think the way we've done it is appropriate, I think council members, because we're dealing with people, we're not dealing with, uh, facilities or development applications, we're dealing with people, and I think in that case, uh, people should have the freedom to vote, uh, privately, without having the pressure or feeling the need to vote a certain way because it's public. So I would, I would recommend that we stay in the same, with the same, uh, pattern that we've had.
Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship. Um, I also want to echo that, while I appreciate this coming forward, uh, for me, there's a couple of issues that arose when I thought about the context of, um, making decisions this way. And I guess the first one is that it would be an anomaly or a diversion away from the way that we currently choose committee and other appointees. And so for me, if we were considering doing this, you know, it might be better to do it more broadly and have a council procedure bylaw uh, change, because the council procedure bylaw currently does by default infer that we are going to make those decisions in a closed meeting, and it will be eventually released upon council's approval to, uh, the community, of course, um, with the appointment names made. Um, fundamentally, I, I'm not at all opposed to the fact that in the context of a closed meeting, we could all get up, put our name forward and state why it is we think we're appropriate for the job, why, uh, what performance and suitability we have for that, that's not an issue for me. However, I, I am somewhat challenged by the fact that I believe to some degree that the bar has been set by those who have elected us to act on their behalf, and this is a delegation of that authority, so this is yet one more step that we're being required, uh, to take in a process that I feel would be best undertaken in the manner that we currently do it. I'm not saying it's perfect, but I don't see any huge upside to doing it this way, and if there was, I think, a case would have to be made that we should start to process different appointments in, in a similar manner. So, uh, while I understand, uh, the rationale uh, and support transparency, I'm not going to support this particular, uh, prospect of, um, undertaking our appointments in this way.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I, I can say, I kind of see this one both ways, I don't have strong opinions on it, but I actually, uh, support the motion, I think. I think it would be good for the public to see the process of how representatives are chosen for Metro Vancouver, especially given the, the important, the rising importance of Metro Vancouver on the tax bills and on the services they provide to us. I think there's not a lot of clarity, or a lot of interest from the public on Metro Vancouver, it's kind of this black box that, you know, people are appointed behind closed doors and they go off to Burnaby, and there really isn't a lot of awareness of how important Metro Vancouver actually is. I think it would be important for members of council to explain to the public why they're the best choice to be the Metro Vancouver representative for our committee, what they hope to achieve when they get there, and, uh, what they're working on, uh, while they're there, and currently we don't get any of that, really. So I think that that would be appropriate and worthwhile for the public to see. I don't see any problem with, uh, public pressure about to bear on making the best choice versus the process that I've seen so far. Um, so, but ideally, uh, I don't expect this motion to have any chance whatsoever, but, uh, I certainly support it. Thanks.
Uh, Counsel Davis.
Uh, thank you, I, um, there's two or three things. Um, uh, I'm glad we have a full council, um, now, because this was changing the way we, we vote, and, uh, so, um, we all learned on the weekend, when we do vote, we go behind cardboard. Um, and, um, I think that, uh, it could, this could create uh, animosity between the council members, which maybe we, we have, or we don't, um, but I, I do see some real, a real good thing about, um, uh, if a new council is elected, the first time you put the, uh, um, when I was elected, I didn't have a clue about what anybody was all about, and it was really help, I, I, it would be really helpful to have uh, council members, two minutes, or three, or whatever, to say, hey, this is why I should be there. Uh, I'm not just wanting to go there because you get paid extra, you know, I, I, I love that idea of, of saying, this is why I should go there. But I'm just wondering, could we divide it, uh, like the number one, you know, uh, give them speak, give them time to say and, uh, um, you know, di- divide the other two into one, uh, because I don't know how that really works. You either get elected or you don't, well, with, anyhow, um, so I, I, I see some good things here because we, you know, the metro is a big part of being on council, if you're, we're all connected, you know, the, uh, mayor goes and, and there's big committees, and, um, we want our representation there. So maybe, maybe you change the vote a little bit wouldn't, wouldn't hurt, I mean, I, you know, I just don't like the idea of getting, uh, I don't like the idea of, well, I don't know, I, I guess Counsel Whitmarsh said it, this isn't a building or a policy, this is about people, and, uh, sometimes that can make people, my Aunt Jean still, to this very day, says, I don't tell who I vote for, and, um, I don't know. Anyhow, that's my points.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, uh, you know, certainly supportive of the idea of, uh, those members, well, those council members who are metro reps being held more accountable to what they do on metro. I have no issue with, uh, a time at council meeting where the council members that want to run for metro could give a speech publicly, um, I don't have any problem with that, I think that's, that sounds like a great initiative. Um, for me, it's the vote that I think should remain in special clothes, uh, but the speech and the, uh, and that, I have no issue with that. So if we wanted to divide that, I'd be supportive of that, but the, it's the vote itself that I think should remain because it is about people, and special clothes tells, uh, and our bylaw tells us that special clothes, one of the issues is personnel and people, and that matters to be kept more confidential.
Okay, let's move into the special, Counsel Richter.
Yeah, well, if you want to move division, that's fine, I think there are some aspects of this that, um, we should definitely be proceeding with, because as we all know, when we go behind closed doors to decide on committee appointments, et cetera, there's no discussion. It's just a secret ballot, and the same thing happens with, uh, the election of the metro reps. And I think that, um, if people are going to want to, uh, put their names forward for those positions, they should be stating it, giving a speech. Um, I also think that there is a potential for the vote to fracture excessively, um, depending on, um, the groupings that appear in council. So it concerns me that a person might get a metro seat with only three votes of this council, and I think that if you get a metro seat, and that's because there are, there could be many people running, if you get a metro seat, you should have fifty percent support minimum of the council that's sending you there. So, um, um, I, I, I would like to move division, let's see how, which ones of these will fly and which ones won't.
Seconder.
Second.
Davis seconds, show hands on division, all those in favor, opposed. Mayor froze, Counsel Whitmarsh opposed, carries. Uh, so we're divided, and, uh, so, okay, so let's, we all had our say, we'll just go through each one. And vote on it, number one, uh, so, I'll question on number one.
Just wait, I have a, a, quite, a comment about number one. Number one is, you know, number one itself, I think, probably needs to be divided, and that's the issue I have, is that, one, it talks about the two-minute public speech, but it also talks about having a vote in open. So it's, I appreciate that we have three different, uh, actions here to vote on, but to me, number one itself needs to be.
Wish to move, uh, division of number one? Do you wish to move division number one? Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yes, I do, I'll move it to number one.
And second, Counsel Arneson, show hands, all those in favor, opposed, carries. Okay, so we'll start with one A, I'll call it, that's the first part. Uh, so, that's, the votes are held in open meetings, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed. Counsel Arneson, Mayor froze, Counsel Long, uh, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Davis, Counsel Ferguson, opposed. And, uh, move on to, so that fails, so we move on to one B, and that's a two-minute speech about the eligibility for Metro Vancouver Region Board seat. Um, I'm still going to have to oppose this because it is about people, now we're saying who wants to run it, who doesn't, and then again, it comes out, uh, at the end, who's been appointed, so. Support this one either. So I'm going to call the question, all those in favor, opposed. Mayor froze, Counsel Long, Counsel Huns, Counsel Ferguson, opposed, that carries. And number two, uh, vote on number two, the successful to accommodate, must begin to see fifty, plus one, call the question, all those in favor, opposed. Counsel Arneson, Mayor froze, Counsel Long, Counsel Huns, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Davis, Counsel Ferguson opposed, that fails. And number three, and, uh, it's the vote, so I'm going to call the question, number three, all those in favor, opposed. Counsel Arneson, Mayor froze.
Well, that's, it's.
Counsel Long, yeah, okay, we're voting on it, Counsel Huns, Whitmarsh, and Ferguson, and Davis opposed, that fails. Okay, so now we move on to other business, is there any other business?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Backham, just, uh, give me a second here, Mr. Backham.
Your worship, just for the benefit of the clerk then, so we have that motion corrected, it looks like one portion did pass, we should recite that.
One, one B, the, uh, two-minute public speech, so whoever wants to run for.
So that'll be part of the process going forward?
Okay, right, Counsel Richter.
Um, yes, I just wanted to ask staff when the Fort Langley pool, um, discussion was coming back, and when we would be having the opportunity for public input on it.
Uh, Mr. Seppi, do you have an update for us?
Thank you, your worship, yeah, uh, I think at this point, your worship, uh, it's going to be early in the new year, uh, before, uh, staff can, can read that back forward to council.
Okay, so the, I thought the motion that was passed by council had actually directed that public input be obtained this fall, I thought it was supposed to be in October.
Uh, perhaps what I can do, your worship, is, uh, to, uh, investigate the status and, uh, and provide council with an update, uh, as part of a memorandum.
Thank you.
Okay, but there is still going to be a public input opportunity on the pool.
There is, yes, there is, yeah, that's part of it.
But it may be put off now until the new year.
That's quite possible.
Provide that information to council as soon as possible, your worship, I just don't have the, uh, the information handy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Counsel Arneson.
Yeah, thank you, worship, it's just further to the, um, the earlier cannabis retail, uh, reconsiderations and, uh, heads up that I'm going to be bringing a motion for the next meeting on that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel Davis.
Yes, just a quick update, not an update, just, I forgot when, um, we were going to have a conversation with the, um, uh, BC, uh, provincial government about, uh, the hotel, uh, mo- uh, motel in Milner, uh, their purchase about, um, you know, I'm not given enough information, but we, I think we were going to have.
I'll ask staff, Mr. Backham, Mr. Backham.
Uh, your worship, I think where it's been left at the moment is that staff are trying to liaise with, uh, both Fraser Health and the provincial authorities to get a, uh, a firm status of what the plans are for the Milner Hotel, uh, I think it's called Canada's Best Value. Uh, what we understand, it has been under some sort of rental arrangement, lease arrangement, but we're not certain as to its tenures to title. We're still working to determine that with, uh, with the provincial authorities, and, uh, the challenges, they have many arms that are dealing with some of these issues, so as a consequence, it's not simply a matter of asking one, it's actually coordinating through several to get a firm answer, but it looks like the use is now, uh, at least, uh, partially, uh, uh, perhaps all, uh, providing some, some assistance for those that are without homes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so any other business? See none, I'll move on to, um, motions, all the special opposed, can I have a motion please?
To move.
Arneson, and second, Counsel Davis, uh, all those, that's, uh, any on table? Okay, so just the agenda items, all those in favor, opposed, and carries, and, uh, we want to, uh, motion terminated. Counsel Whitmarsh, uh, move termination, Counsel Arneson, is that your hand going up, second, second, all those in favor, opposed, carried, you're mooted, Counsel Davis.
Hey, doesn't say here.
Well, you were, at least I didn't hear you, yeah. All right, uh, thank you very much, uh, this, uh, meeting is not terminated, and we will take, uh, five minute break, and then we'll go into, uh, votes, so that'll take us to five forty-five.